As the year went on, we realized there's so much going on in the city of Lacey, and especially up here in northeast Lacey with all the developments happening, all transportation issues that are going on. And of course, we've been having a lively conversation about those who are those who are unsheltered in our community. And so we thought, the council's been getting quite a few questions. And we thought, you know, it'd be better to have a meeting and invite the public and hear just exactly some of the things that we've been doing when it comes to this issue. And not only from a legal standpoint, but from the things that we've been working on for quite a while to address that. So as the night goes on, we're going to first hear from Scott Egger, who's our Public Works Director. He's going to talk about some transportation projects that are going on. Then we're going to hear from Rick Walk, who's our Community and Economic Development Director. And he's going to give us up some development updates and all, everything that's been happening here in northeast Lacey. And then when we go into our homelessness discussion, we're going to hear from Dave Schneider, who's our legal representative here, our city attorney. And he's going to go over a couple of court cases that have affected local jurisdictions, really the public in general. He's going to talk a little bit about that. Chief Semco, our new chief of police. If you haven't had a chance to meet him, hopefully you will tonight. And he's going to talk about the recent camping ordinance that we passed and some of the issues he's seen in the police department and why he felt this was so necessary that we passed that ordinance. And then Rick Walk's going to go over, talking about some of our current efforts that we're doing along this and also the mitigation site that has been proposed that's not in the city of Lacey, it's in our urban growth area, but it's obviously over here. And we're going to, he's going to talk a little bit about that. So let's get started right away. Actually, before we get started, I'm going to pass the mic here and I'll have each of the council introduce themselves.
Cynthia Pratt, Deputy Mayor of Lacey.
Michael Stedman, council member. I live right in Edgewater, right down the street.
Councilmember Jason Hearn.
Hi, Councilmember Carolyn Cox.
Councilmember Linda Zeeman.
Councilmember Lenny Greenstein.
Thank you, council. And I'm going to turn it over to Scott Egger.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Egger. I'm Lacey's Public Works Director. I just want to give you a very super quick briefing on a few transportation projects that are going on in northeast Lacey this year and into next year. So just to give you a quick description on 31st Avenue, Marvin Road, and Hoxbury Roundabout, Campus Glen Drive Extension, a couple of overlay projects coming up in 2020. And then just a short note on Exit 111, the DDI project, which is a Washington State Department of Transportation job. So you probably know from living up here, there are several very large development projects going on. And as a condition of those developments, they're required to build roads or frontage improvements adjacent to them. So I'm going to start down here, just for reference. Here's a Target warehouse. Here's the new IDS warehouse, the new 31st Avenue and Marvin Road. So Washington State Department of Transportation is relocating their regional headquarters from Tumwater to Lacey. And they're locating it as shown right here. So they are building a 31st Avenue extension that will extend from Marvin Road east to the eastern, excuse me, west, the western edge of their property to Gateway Boulevard. And you probably know that Gateway Boulevard has been extended from Britton Parkway up to this point by the residential developers. Eventually, 31st Avenue will extend all the way down to Carpenter Road. So that is a two-lane road with bike lanes. It'll have landscape strips, sidewalks, streetlights, all those amenities. And that's about a half-mile section that's being built by the DOT. So then to the north, you have the North Point Development. And Rick Walk will be describing a little bit more about these developments when he talks to you. But as a condition of their project, they're required to build their frontage improvements on Marvin Road north to the northern edge of their property. So that's, again, about a half-mile improvement. So they will be improving the east side of the road with curb, gut, landscape strip, sidewalk, street lighting. And also, we had a planned project, excuse me, a roundabout, to widen the roundabout to a two-lane roundabout at Hoxbury and Marvin Road. And we were going to proceed with that next year. They asked if they could build that. And that will be, you know, basically, they'll be reimbursed through their traffic mitigation fees to do that. But they wanted to build that this year as they're building their site so that it would be complete and not interfere with the operations of their facility when it's complete. So then moving a little bit to the east here, you have Hoxbury Extension. Hogan Bay Road is the Bridgepoint Development, which is under construction right now. So just, you know, you can look from the school site and see it. Excuse me. So they're going to extend Campus Glen Drive. Here's the school. They're going to extend it to Hogan Bay Road. And that'll continue to be, look just like the road that's here, two-lane, bike lanes. But in order to keep truck traffic from Bridgepoint coming this way, there will be traffic control measures to prevent that. Moving on, in 2020, next year, we're going to come in and we're going to overlay Meridian Road from 31st Avenue north to 46. If you remember, a few years ago, we overlaid from 31st down to the roundabout. In addition, we're going to rebuild the roundabout at that time. Sorry about that. Oh, sometimes water just tastes so good. And then, just moving on to the State Department of Transportation project, the DDI. So the next major change is going to occur probably this coming Tuesday. So you have I-5, Marvin Road, Hoxbury Restaurant. And so that change is going to involve a detour on Quinault Road. So right now, as you're going westbound on Quinault, you have two lanes. One lane is a right-hand turn and a through lane combined. The other lane is a dedicated left. So they're going to push the traffic down a little bit. They're going to push the traffic a little bit to the south. And that's just going to be one lane. I guess I need a quarter or so, or maybe a camelback. But the detour will just be detoured to one lane. And they're going to construct a third lane. So the ultimate configuration, instead of just having the two lanes westbound that you have now, there will be three dedicated lanes. There'll be a dedicated left, a dedicated through, and a dedicated right-hand lane. So like I say, this is a Department of Transportation project. They have a great website. You can go to their website at i5xat111.com. And if you haven't, I'd recommend, and you can sign up for project alerts. So all these detours and slowdowns, neck downs, any alerts they have, they will email to you in advance. Just coming up, this later summer or early fall, will be a full bridge closure again for a weekend like they had at the start of the summer. And after that weekend closure... So after the weekend closure, gee, I guess I'm going to lose my voice here. So I better get through this in a hurry. They will have the bridge down to one lane each direction until about Thanksgiving. And that's to do other necessary work that they have, you know, to transition and complete the DDI. The DDI obviously won't be completed or isn't completely scheduled until 2020, but that is a necessary, you know, staging that they need to do to move ahead with their work. So that's all I have to say, which is probably good because I think my voice is about done. But anyway, if you have transportation projects, feel free to, you know, call me up, email me. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
I know some people have, yeah, good job there, Scott. You know? Obviously, it never fails, you know, you prepare for all that stuff and then you lose your voice. So, but if you have, if you have any specific questions about transportation projects, please fill out your card and we'll get to them during the comment and question area time. So now I'm going to turn it over to Rick Walk.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. And again, my name is Rick Walk. I'm the Director of Community and Economic Development. And, you know, the north part of Lacey, north of I-5, has experienced a lot of growth and development over the last 10, 10-plus years. So I'm going to highlight some of that, but mostly it's going to be focused on the last couple of years in the industrial development activity. But that being said, and you've probably looked around your community, you've had a law residential in citywide. In the last three years, we've had about 1,400 multifamily units come online, as well as about 700 single-family detached homes, building permits issued for those. And approximately about half of those have been up in this area, whether it's off of Gateway Boulevard, which extended north of Britton Parkway, north of Cabela's with the Gateway Division 2 subdivision, or finishing out of the Hoxbury Plan Community, the Ju... faces 17, 18 of the Jubilee Community. So there's been a lot of residential activity, but now we're seeing a lot of industrial. So over the last two to three years, we've seen about 2 million square feet of industrial building space come out of the ground and with about 800 to 1,000 jobs. And to kind of highlight some of those projects that have been built, we have the, we had Trader Joe's, which has a 500,000-square-foot facility. They just recently completed an expansion of about 90,000 square feet. We also had a large 800,000-square-foot facility open up. It's U-Line that sells basically industrial supplies and packaging materials. They opened up just south of the Target facility. And they bring in about 250 jobs with their operation. Also, Whole Foods located a refrigeration building for distribution at about 100,000 square feet. And then the Bridgepoint Development, which is right over here that Scott just mentioned, that's going to be extending Campus Glen Drive over to Hogan Bay. They're looking at bringing on three buildings with a combined total of about 700,000 square feet. And they don't have any particular tenants in mind for those buildings yet, but at least we're not aware of. But they are building that on speculation at this point. Other projects that's come online is the West Rock. They're an outlying pad next to U-Line. They also do packaging materials, and so they're a natural side user to the U-Line facility. They're developing about 75,000-square-foot facility. And then we have what we call System 3 warehouses, warehouse, which is going to be a smaller 3,000-square-foot facility opening up close by, next to Shipwrecked Beads. And then down along Orion Drive, we have the Fastenal facility that's now under construction. You might see that the particular site's been, had been graded for quite some time, and it's taken a while to come out of the ground. Now Fastenal's opened up their 250,000-square-foot facility and bringing in about 100 jobs with that project. And one other item I want to note is Pileout Services, a smaller user. They're taking the old Noble Trust site and they're relocating out of Tacoma. And they're in an operation that's going to bring in about 100 jobs and actually be able to reemploy a lot of those workers that used to work at the Noble Trust and facility. And so with that company going, the ownership retiring out and closing the business, we're able to save some of those jobs that were already on that site. So going forward, next couple of years, we're going to have another round of projects that will be, have been approved and just start becoming out of the ground. We have about two, just over 2 million square feet in the pipeline. And with that, another projected about 800, 1,000 jobs. A couple of those projects, Scott mentioned earlier, the North Point Project, which is a facility, it's called the Hogan Bay Logistics Center. And that's going to be located right off of Marvin Road next to the Hox... yeah, Hoxbury, Marvin Road Roundabout. And that's going to consist of about three buildings totaling 1.5 million square feet. The primary tenant is going to be Home Depot. They have an existing 750,000-square-foot facility in Lacey. They're adding two more, one 800,000 square feet in size, and a second one around 300 square feet in size. And they're expanding their operations and meeting the online demand for distribution to not only their stores, but also to the home. So that's a project where they're expanding their operation to meet in that online demand and online sales. We also have the Department of Transportation's Olympic Region Headquarters located down across the street on Marvin Road. And with that facility, they're bringing all their offices, as well as their equipment yards, and about 200 employees. We also will see at the corner of Hogan Bay and 31st, across from U-Line, the Hogan Bay Industrial Project. That will be about 145,000-square-foot facility right off of Hogan Bay on the Hogan Bay Truck Route. And then the Conco Project, which is located off of Willamette and Orion. They'll be finishing out their approvals and adding two more buildings totaling 400,000 square feet. So we're seeing a lot of continuation of that industrial growth, and we'll see that construction activity over the next couple of years. One thing I do want to note with all this, because again, this has been a lot of development activity out in this area for the last 10 to 15 years. And what we're really seeing is the tail end of a planned 30-year build-out. All this area was part of a, two master plans. The Hoxbury Plan Community, which included basically the Target Site going north through the Jubilee and Edgewater Communities, as well as the Meridian Campus Master Plan, which basically off of Hogan Bay Road and Willamette Drive, all the way up through the Meridian Campus neighborhoods and the golf courses. Both these master plans were approved in the late 80s and incorporated into the city's conferency plan in the early 90s to set the land use patterns, as well as all the infrastructure, streets, and everything else. And so as time progressed, what we're seeing here is the build-out of that master plan and the city's conferency plan for this area to meet this projected growth. That included all the residential neighborhoods, the schools. The school site was part of that master plan, excuse me, as well as the parks and everything else. So what we're, you know, again, what we're seeing is that we're, this planned growth has been realized and projected, and it's now being built out with this latest round of industrial projects. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the mayor for the rest of the evening.
Great. Well, thank you. It's really amazing how much growth that we've had here in northeast Lacey. I remember, I was born and raised over an old historic Lacey neighborhood next to St. Martin's. And I actually, I bought my childhood home, so I'm raising my family there. And I remember coming out this area and there was nothing until you got to Tolemy State Park. I mean, there was nothing out here. And so to see how much growth that we've had has been amazing. And hearing all the different distribution centers that have chosen to relocate to Lacey is, it's a double-edged sword, right? Maybe we're so happy for the economic development and the good jobs. On the other hand, that's a lot of traffic, you know, with all those employees and of course, the trucks that are going through here. And be able to manage both is difficult. But that's why I've been really happy with the planning that we've had. And I know it's been difficult with all the construction, road construction that you've seen. But the fact that we now have a freight slip ramp, and once the double diamond interchange is done, that we'll be able to exit right off of the freeway and hopefully not be interacting with all the traffic that's on Marvin right now. And so that will help, of course, when the roundabout expands to two lanes, it's going to help. And so the improvements to Marvin Road has been much needed. Of course, we haven't had a sidewalk there for a long time. And now that sidewalk's coming in, that will be a big improvement. So we just ask you to hang in there as we get through all this construction. Obviously, our buildable lands is coming to an end. And so this area is almost built out. But there, of course, the next step that we're keeping all of our fingers crossed on is what we call the Gateway Area, which is everything next to Cabela's. And we're really hoping now, after the double diamond interchange is done, and then there will be a couple of slip ramps that can access that property, that we will start hopefully seeing some movement there. And that has been a planned sort of city center for a long time that prior councils have approved and was on its way. Cabela's was built, and then of course, the recession hit and everything stopped. And since then, then the Squawly Tribe has purchased all that property. And so we're ongoing conversations with them about the next steps, you know, whenever we get started, you know, whenever approval of a new master plan. And we're hoping that's going to happen sometime soon. So as we go into our next discussion, which is probably why a lot of people show up tonight, is on our homeless discussion. Again, as I pointed out at the beginning, we're going to hear from our Dave Schneider, who's going to do an overview of some of the recent court cases that have affected local jurisdictions and public property in general. Then we're going to hear from our chief to go over our camping ordinance. And then Rick Walk is going to come back and have a conversation about the proposed mitigation site and some current efforts we're doing. So I'll turn it over to our city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned, my name's Dave Schneider. I'm the city attorney for the city of Lacey. And so it's my job to review the legal landscape and to draft and prepare legislation for council's consideration. And as everybody here, I'm sure, knows, the issue of homelessness and the way homelessness presents itself to the public has become an increasingly front-page issue over the last several years. It's nothing new, but it's on everybody's minds. And so I'm quite sure that most of you that are here for that topic, that have questions, are going to be directing those questions at council coming up. But what I wanted to do was just lay down a little bit of groundwork. Maybe I'll answer some of your questions. But if not, just to provide a little bit of a framework from which we can begin our discussion. So in Lacey, homelessness really presents itself to the public in a couple of different ways. One of those ways is camping on public property. That could be in a tent, that could be in a sleeping bag, under blankets, on cardboard, that could be in an RV, in a parking lot, on the street. Another way it presents itself is through what's known as panhandling. Somebody on the side of the street with a sign asking for change, asking for help, asking for assistance. And council members, the chief, city staff, we get a lot of questions, a lot of concerns from the public on both sides. I mean, there's obviously different perspectives that affect everybody. But a lot of questions and concerns get raised to us about why we're not doing anything, why we're just allowing all of this, and how come there's no enforcement. On the camping front, there was a case, Martin v. Boise, that was ruled by, ruled on by the Ninth Circuit, U.S. Court of Appeals. And in that case, the city of Boise in Idaho had an ordinance on the books that just prohibited camping on public property. Just put a blanket over the whole city, said you can't camp here. Well, a couple of people were, you know, prosecuted for doing just that. They appealed. In a nutshell, what the Court of Appeals indicated was that if you are homeless and you don't have anywhere to go, to criminalize that conduct is unconstitutional under the Eighth Amendment. And so what they indicated was that no city can have an ordinance that criminalizes homelessness or that prosecutes a person for camping on public property if they're homeless unless there's an alternate shelter available for them. So the court didn't indicate that cities have an obligation to build shelters. You don't have to do that. Nor does this, nor does any city have to allow camping at any time, any place, anywhere, for anybody. There's, but you can regulate it. Cities do have the ability to regulate that behavior. They do have the ability to take ownership and take care of their property and put rules and restrictions on the use of that property. So in light of that case, some of you may be aware that the council, our city council, passed an ordinance last week related to camping. And what that ordinance does is it criminalizes camping on public property. It indicates that you can't, you can't do it. However, the ordinance contains language indicating that law enforcement, if during the investigation of that perceived camping on public property, if law enforcement discovers that the person is in fact homeless and that the reason they're camping is because they're homeless and that there's no place else for them to go, then law enforcement is not going to prosecute. That doesn't mean that law enforcement can't, doesn't mean the ordinance isn't enforceable. It's still illegal. Law enforcement can still investigate. Law enforcement can still identify. Law enforcement, once a law enforcement, and chief's going to discuss this, but once law enforcement becomes aware that the person is homeless, then the discussion changes. Then the conversation isn't any longer about prosecuting. Then it becomes, are there available shelters for you? What can we do to help you, if necessary? Another facet I'd like to touch on briefly is the, is the panhandling. And so Lacey has a panhandling ordinance, and Lacey used to enforce it consistently. However, and I think that ordinance was adopted maybe 2005. And it was enforced until a couple of years ago. And a couple of years ago, the state Supreme Court, the Washington State Supreme Court, in a case out of Lakewood, held that it's unconstitutional to enforce a panhandling ordinance because basically it's a violation of free speech. A person has the right to, you know, it's a content-based restriction. So a person has a right to ask for help. A person has a right to say, "I'm hungry, please help," or spare change, or whatever. And you can't focus on the content of speech and say, "No, no, not that speech." And so as a result, that behavior is, you know, from a lot of people's perspectives, it's unwanted behavior. But unfortunately, it's a difficult behavior to regulate. So with that, I think we're obviously going to save questions for later, but I think that's it for me for now.
Great. Thank you. I know this one's been, those, these court cases have obviously changed a lot for, for local jurisdictions. Prior, of course, with our panhandling ordinance, we, we have, you know, regulated that pretty well. And so you did not see panhandling in Lacey. But it's amazing that as soon as this court case came out, it's like almost immediately, we saw a huge increase in panhandling in Lacey. And it's been difficult to try to explain this one. But if, sort of, if you sort of think it through, it's really difficult to limit someone's free speech. What, what's concerning from at least my standpoint is if an individual's going into traffic. And so I believe that causes some issues that, that is a safety issue. And so for me, there's a difference between holding a sign and then actually going out into traffic. And I'm not sure, we haven't had a conversation about that on this council. But I know that is a concern for me, and I know it's a concern for several of the council members as well. And then, of course, the, the big case about camping on public property is something that has caught a lot of, especially smaller jurisdictions, really off guard because we do, obviously do not have a dedicated source of funding to find a way to provide a safe alternative space. And then what is that safe alternative space? Where is it located? And then everything else, how long can they stay there? And all those other, all those other things that go along with it. And so we are, are, have been discussing this within this council about what kind of facilities should we provide? Where should they be located? What's the time limit someone could be there? You know, what is acceptable, not acceptable, while someone is there? Actions while someone's there? And so this is one of the reasons why we wanted to come out and hear from the public. We want to hear from, from you guys of what's your opinion on this? And where do you think Lacey should concentrate? And what services should be provided, so on, so forth? So as I said before, we have a comment cards. And so if you have a specific question, please fill that out. And then if you have a comment, you'll be able to come up and talk to the microphone. But we'll get that right after, a little bit later, after we hear from the chief that's going to talk a little bit more about the camping ordinance. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, everybody. My name's Ken Semco, and I'm your new chief of police. And I live about three blocks down the street. So that's important to me because I go home and take off my uniform. I'm going on walks with you in the evening, and your concerns are my concerns. So I'm not only listening, I really hear you. I hear what you have to say. So I'm just going to briefly touch on some of the things that our attorney and the mayor talked about, and then we can answer some questions as long as you want to talk. But real quick, I want to introduce two people that you should know. Back there to my left, that is Commander Jim Mack. So he handles all the investigations for the city of Lacey. So virtually everyone you see that's in a suit that's going to do an investigation, that's Commander Upton's folks. And the handsome gentleman right in front of me here, that is Commander Mack. And virtually everyone in a uniform, that's his division. So I wanted you to meet those two folks. So as your police chief and your police department, our number one responsibility is your safety. And just as important is... And just as important is your perception of safety, how you feel, your well-being. So when we talk about the homeless problem, that creates a lot of mixed feelings. But something I want to make perfectly clear is there's a difference between homelessness and lawlessness. So lawlessness is easy. That's what we deal with. If somebody's violating the law, doesn't matter what their socioeconomic status is, I don't care if it's Bill Gates, or it's the guy you saw holding the sign, they're in violation of law, and that we're going to take care of business to the limit that law allows us to do so. But then when you deal with homelessness, that's not a crime. And that's something that, it's a national emergency, that we're all trying to address. Someone that's standing on the side of the street, holding a sleeping bag, that maybe doesn't look great, maybe doesn't smell great, maybe is yelling and screaming, it's not against the law. It's not illegal. Does that affect your perception of safety when you have your kids and you're walking down the street? Sure it does. So there's limitations on what we can do to engage with those folks. But we have the responsibility to do both, right? We need to take care of criminal things, and we also have to take care of the folks throughout in the street, because everyone's afforded the same rights that the great state of Washington and the U.S. Constitution gives us. So that's going to lead me into our camping ordinance. So the mayor touched on it briefly and gave you a little bit of a background on how we got that passed. And the council saw that it was something that we needed in our community for a couple reasons. First and foremost is equal opportunity to be in public space. Have that available to everyone, regardless of your socioeconomic status, but it needs to be available to everybody. So that's a very important piece of the camping ordinance, probably the most important piece. And when he talked about the Boise decision, and our attorney did a great job in explaining that, that really changed the way we address camping in public, because it added some restrictions on what we can and cannot do with enforcing that ordinance. I think it's no secret that most of the people that we encounter that are camping on public property are in fact homeless. So we have to address it in a way that the courts allow us to do so. And in talking with council, and they had a lot of concerns, they said, "Well, you know, Chief, you know, we don't want to criminalize homelessness. We want to make sure there's access to public space for everybody and everyone to enjoy, but how do we make sure that we're not criminalizing homelessness and we're taking care of everybody in our community, which includes our homeless population?" And my response to that was, this law, aside from the criminal aspect of it, again, that's the easy part. That's what we train to do, and if there's criminal activity, we can deal with that. But this law does more than that. It gives us the legal authority to engage those that are camping in public, to find out who they are, what their needs are, and how we can help them. Because ultimately, whatever side of the fence you're on, we just want people to have a house. We want them off the street. We want them to have a place to live, right? That really is a win for everybody. So aside from the criminal part of it, it gives us the ability to legally engage folks that maybe don't want someone talking to them. Maybe they're mentally ill. Maybe they have a drug or alcohol-related problem, and they just don't want to talk to the police department. Prior to the passage of this law, a law enforcement officer, I can go and talk to anybody, but anybody can tell me, "Hey, Ken, I don't want to talk to you, go away." And Ken has to turn around and walk away. But with the passage of this law, it gives me the ability to engage folks, again, find out a little bit about them, find out what they're doing out on the street, and see what it is that we can do to assist them in getting off of the street. So two parts, lawlessness versus homelessness. So I want to talk a little bit about the camping ordinance and how that affects public and private property, because it gets really confusing. There's a lot of open space out here that you may think is public, you may think is private. Private property, there's nothing we can do on private property, other than assist the landlord of that property if they do not want trespassers on that property. So if I own 10 acres out here, and there's campers on those 10 acres, and the person who owns those 10 acres says, "Hey, I don't have a problem with that," it's not against the law. I mean, there may be some sort of camping planning thing that Rick can talk about, but as far as law enforcement goes, it's not against the law. So what we do is we work with the landlords, and we'll contact them, and we'll say, "Hey, we've had a lot of complaints in the public about folks out on your property, because there's the quality of life that I talked about. There's trash that's being strewn about. It's an eyesore. We think it's unhealthy, it's unsafe. We're concerned about the people that are living there." And then what we can do is get a trespass letter from the landlord, which gives us the legal authority to act on their behalf if they're not there, and take enforcement action, if necessary, to remove the people from the property. Now, 90% of the time, the way that works is we walk up to the folks and say, "Hey, I know you've been living here for a while, the landlord doesn't want you here, he'd like you to leave. We're going to give you a couple days to pack up your things and find another place to go, but you can't stay here." And then we're able to move the person out of that location. But as you know, that's real difficult, because now where do they go? Right? So then we're going to have to deal with that someplace else and utilize, as a county of Thurston, utilize all our resources to find out how, again, we can reach that magical goal of getting those folks off the street. So I wanted to explain that to you a little bit, and I know that gets really confusing. So what we did is we developed, and I was talking to one of your community members, and I applaud her because she's really been vocal about some of her concerns, and we talked quite a bit. She's been at council meetings, and we came up with an idea, because it's very difficult as a citizen to say, "Well, it's a trash problem, it's not really a police problem, so I'm going to call over here in City Hall." And they're great, but they got to call somebody else, and then they got to call somebody else. You're a community member, you just want to get this taken care of, who do you call? Right? So what we're going to do with, or what we have done, starting today, the thing about is about 5:00 o'clock, this thing went live, we got it put together for you, for a chronic quality-of-life-related problem. Say you've seen a campsite on a property, and it's been there for a couple weeks, and you just want it to be addressed. You've seen a pile of trash on the sidewalk, and your kids have to walk around it to get to school. You see shopping carts full of property that have been someplace, and you don't know if it's public property or private property. In the back, when you leave, you have a little piece of paper, and what that does is it gives you a, it's our PD website, super easy. If I can do it, you can do it, trust me, because I tried it, all right? So you log on to the PD website, Lacey PD, and there's a big banner on there that says, "Quality-of-life-related issue concern." You click on it. You can, you don't have to put your name on there. You can fill out what the problem is. If you want to put your name, contact information, we can get back to you. There's a box on there for you to check that says that you don't want that information publicly disclosed, because real liberal laws in the state of Washington, as you know, about public disclosure, this will give us the ability to keep your information confidential. So if you'd like to have a confidential, please check that box, and we won't have to disclose it. And that gives us a method to track it, and then we can get the appropriate resources, whether it's a PD response, or it's a Public Works response, or a Parks response, or some other resource that we can get together and work as a team with my fellow directors here, and we can get the help that we need for our community. Okay? But I want to emphasize, that isn't for something that if you feel, you know, that needs a police response immediately, you feel threatened, something's dangerous, don't send an email, or don't call the helpline and leave a message. That's when you need to call the police department, okay? And I say that, and people usually get a chuckle, but there have been people that have, you know, "I saw someone getting whatever," and they send in an email, and two days later we go through and go, "Oh, my gosh, what happened?" Right? So we don't want you to do that. But all that information's on the little piece of paper. I would encourage you to take it. And of course, always, if there's an emergency, call 911. I don't know if I should call 911 or not, call 911. That's what we do, that's why we're here. Okay? Now, how you can help us a little bit is reporting. Let us know. I was telling the community member today that, you know, she called a lot and talked to a lot of people, and we found out a great discussion last week, and that really helped us out, because she gave us some great information. She went so far, she knew who the landlords were to some of these places, so we connected it all, and we got some help. And we got some things cleaned up, and we got some folks who were there, some help that they needed, and slowly but surely, that area got cleaned up that she was talking about. And the other thing, we all have a soft heart for somebody that needs help. I can tell you, I've been doing this a long time. I come from a place that has a tremendous transient or homeless population. It's in Santa Monica, California. So I've got a lot of experience, spent the last 25 years dealing with this issue, okay? And I can tell you that handing out money, handing out food to the person directly enables them to be homeless another day. Okay? And look, my wife's here with me today, and a couple weeks ago, honey, I had to give him some money, and it drove me crazy, because she's a really compassionate, empathetic person that really wants to make a difference, but all that did was get that person, enabled them to be out there one extra day. Take that money, take your time, if you want to volunteer, find an organization that deals directly with homelessness, and that's what I would suggest that you do, that can help all of us in the community. Let's see if I left anything off before questions here. I think that's it. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions.
So I know we're going to have some questions later, but can you give us a quick idea of, you're driving along, you see a camp that looks like they've been there for a couple days. What's the typical response of, what do you do next? And what is the timeframe for, you expect for that person to possibly move on?
It's a great question, and that's something we see every day. So it's going to depend on whether it's on public or private property. Again, if it's on private property, so let's say I'm driving down the street, I see a campsite, you know what, I've driven by this the last five days, and it's still there, and I don't know if the police department knows about it, I don't know if the city knows about it. For something just like that, where you don't see any activity that you see as being threatening, or you don't see any activity, you think it's overtly illegal, or maybe you see the campsite, you don't see any people there, that's what I would encourage you to pick up the piece of paper that's in the back and report it that way. Because, well, again, that is a person, it's our community resource officer, and their sole job is to make sure that gets addressed and what the proper, the proper resources get pushed out to it, not just to take care of that problem for the time being, but to take care of it permanently, so they can really do some follow-up on it. If an officer is responding to that issue, what'll happen more times than not is they'll go out there and go, "Yeah, there's a camp here, I don't see any people, there's no enforcement action to be taken, and, you know, there's another call," and they can't do a follow-up. They're not going to have the time to sit and make phone calls and get the property taken care of. If it's on public property, then we can make a call to our own resources, and we can get to work on getting the camp cleaned up and making contact with the folks that live in that camp. And if they're homeless, they just need a place to live, and that's when we need to go to work and work with our partners and our service providers and try to find them some assistance. If there's something else to that that lends itself to criminal behavior, we can take care of that as well.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know we'll have more questions for the chief a little bit later. Next, Rick Walk is going to talk about really several things that we've been doing as a city over the past several years. I'm really proud of the fact that we've taken a hard look at our resources, what we have available, and how we can use those resources to be the most effective. And if you're familiar with Lacey, a lot of times we try to use a sort of a market-based approach. One thing we know for a fact is that there is a shortage of affordable housing, not only in Lacey, but really it seems like anywhere across the West Coast these days. Thinking of how much it costs for a two-bedroom place to rent right now, and then you need first, last, security deposit, it's pretty expensive. And unfortunately, what we saw during the recession is there's a, we just stopped building. And yet, this area continued to grow and grow and grow. And so it's put a lot of pressure on the market, and so that's been a concern. And then we have been involved with all the service providers in the area. We know a lot of those service providers have chosen to locate in Olympia, but the city has still been responsive to those service providers, and Rick's going to talk a little bit more about that. And then we're going to talk about a couple of the initiatives that we have going forward. Rick?
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. And first, I want to talk a little bit about the mitigation site and talk about where that sits and where that topic is, since it has been a community topic, as well as been written about in the Olympian. So I want to give this a little bit of background on that first. The idea came out from Thurston County in a response to the growing homelessness issues in the county and the region, is to try to identify county properties that could be utilized for a mitigation site to start being able to help some of the homeless move off of the areas of camping, or out in the private property, or in the public rideaways, into a spot that they can be assisted. And so they identified some properties, and of course, this is what's been identified in the paper, as well as some county-owned property off of Carpenter Road, just north of Martin Way. This area, everybody refers to as Lacey. This is actually in Thurston County's jurisdiction. The parcel itself is about 2.8 acres, and again, it's owned by Thurston County. The area in green, that's the city jurisdiction. Our jurisdiction or city limits goes right up to Carpenter Road, immediately adjacent to the site. So the city of Lacey does not have any ownership in that property, nor does it have any regulatory authority in the use of that property or how it's developed. We are basically a neighbor, but we'd work with our jurisdictions, adjacent jurisdictions as best we can. So with the conversation surrounding that site and the possibility of locating a homeless mitigation facility there, the county started talking at the regional level with multiple jurisdictions and invited the city of Lacey to be part of those conversations. And we decided that it'd be better to be a participant in those conversations versus being a bystander, so that we can talk about what that type of facility could and should look like in terms of a short-range plan and as well as a long-range plan, if that is indeed a location. The conversation, there's no specific plans at this point, it's very preliminary, but some of the things we'll be talking about are, include, what is a suitable location and site, and does this meet that criteria? What type of management and rules and accountability be tied to that? What type of supportive services? Whether it be hygiene-related with potable water, sewer, those type of aspects, but also services related to mental health counseling, drug and alcohol addiction treatment, housing assistance, those type of things, in order to look at the long-term success of that facility. So there's a lot of, oh, and also the financial plan for that type of facility and eventually some community outreach. So there's a lot to go on in these conversations. And again, we're just starting that discussion. Once the regional conversation occurs and then the draft plan develops, then is the expectation those plans would come back to the respective councils and commissioners for a review of those plans in the public meeting process to determine, or to certify whether it's be going forward in that location or other locations, or how that would come together. So stay tuned on that conversation and more details. Unfortunately, we don't have a lot of detail tonight, but I just want to make sure everybody's aware that those conversations have started, where the site was located, and where those next steps would eventually happen. So as the mayor mentioned, and kind of follow up the theme of Chief Semco, in terms of other efforts or actions that the city has taken, the council has taken to address homelessness, is trying to figure out ways to not only help assist those nonprofit providers that provide direct services, but also provide actions that can help facilitate more housing in the area that can accommodate lower incomes. First project I want to highlight is the Lacey Food Bank, Thurston County Food Bank. It will be located in a branch facility on Martin Way, and it's a very important project to the community, as well as the city council. The city contributed $200,000 to that project, that in addition to about $750,000 to the state award, you'll start seeing construction, that food bank established on Martin Way. And it's an important service to that particular area and community, because it helps people gain access to food that they may not be able to otherwise afford, or have to make that choice between food and rent. The Lacey Veterans Services Hub, that is, I think, a model facility that the city council and the city established, working with the Department of Veterans Affairs, as well as our local partners in Thurston County. And this is a facility that provides wraparound services to Lacey area veterans, and since its opening, has provided service to about 1,100 veterans that are either homeless or facing homeless. And the type of services that it provides is not only housing assistance and access to housing, but also medical services, access to their benefits, counseling for mental health, and as well as drug addiction. And again, it's been a great success so far with serving over 1,100 veterans that were facing homelessness. One of the things to try to get more types of affordable housing on the street or in the community is the accessory dwelling unit program that the city is starting to initiate, and this is the concept of try to- And this is the concept of try to reduce the barriers for a homeowner to be able to build a accessory dwelling unit or a mother-in-law apartment in their backyard. So we'll look at developing pre-approved plans, pre-approved financing, and a roster of builders, Olympia Master Builders, to be able to create a turnkey program. So if somebody wanted to try to provide low extra income at a smaller unit and affordable price, we can get more units in the community to help access to the, or more affordable housing. Affordable student housing, the, and working with the faith leaders community, we're trying to do partnerships where we can work within developing, oh, working, we're doing partnership with St. Mark's Lutheran Church to use city-owned property, surplus property, smaller pieces of half-acre or lesser former well sites or through utility sites where we can build housing on those, whether it be a single-family home or multi-unit project. And then they'll be made accessible to the families that have students within North Thurston Public Schools that are homeless. The idea is to try to get the family stabilized so the students can continue on their education and graduate from high school and create a stable more environment for that family or homeless student. Then we've also contributed money to, partnered with North Thurston Public Schools and in developing their, North Thurston Public Schools Family Resource Center. And that's a facility that is again, providing the homeless student population with counseling, clothing, food, any type of assistance that they need in order to be able to continue going to school and get their education. And the city council has allocated $200,000 to that project to help make that a reality. And it's another good partnership. Also, just recently, the city has contributed $50,000 to the Salvation Army. They are now going through a expansion remodel to have a total of 50 shelter beds, which again, is another piece of that puzzle when we talk about camping and having a place for people to go, helping support those that provide those shelter services so they can expand their capacity. Another nice funding source that the city has access to, we have access to the source once every three years. It's a community development block grant. And the city will receive about $850,000 every three years that they can allocate to various services. And if you haven't already, in the back, there's a flyer that summarizes some of what I'm talking about, but on the back has a listing of the funding cycles and where that money was allocated. But just to highlight some of the things that the city and the city council has applied that money to include about $250,000 to Evergreen Treatment Services to expand their capacity to treat opioid addictions. Another important factor in providing that, or drug addiction services to people in need. About $70,000 to the community youth services to increase the capacity for transitional housing for young adults or youth. And then a combined $600,000 to the Thurston County Housing Authority and Homes First to develop low-income housing. And then finally, the coordinated entry program. Again, this is tied to veterans as well, but we want to have a person in place that can be that contact for somebody in need that they can be connected, that can connect that person to the various resources, whether it be mental health, housing, and the like. And so we have this coordinated entry program that the city's allocated $55,000 to make that happen. And it's not only connecting them to services, but then getting in that system, their track to see how they're progressing in those services and continue to make improvements in order to get onto a stable level. So with that, that's a quick rundown of the various actions outside of direct mitigation sites or other things that the city has taken in terms of trying to address housing and homelessness. And so I'll turn it back with Mayor Ryder for the rest of the program.
Thank you. That's obviously a quick list of several of the things that we're doing. Something else that wasn't mentioned is that we have ordinance on the books that waives building permit fees to a couple of different nonprofits for them to build affordable housing. As I mentioned, you know, the lack of affordable housing in this area is very concerning. And so there's been a lot of conversation on what we can do as a community to increase the stock of affordable housing. And since it's really up to the private sector to build the affordable housing, you wonder what could be a local government's role in that. Well, we've said, boy, we're waiving building permit fees for nonprofits who's doing this work. Why couldn't we waive those same fees to the private sector if they would commit to building affordable housing as long as the housing stayed affordable and perpetuity? And so this is a topic that we have referred back to our planning commission, which Rick Walk oversees. And so they're currently working on what that looks like. And hopefully, we'll see an ordinance before us that will allow the private sector to take advantage of that as well. Also, this past year, the state legislature passed a law that allows jurisdictions to hold back a portion of the state's sales tax. So the state's portion of our sales tax is 6.5 cents, right? And so what this legislation says is you can hold back a portion of the state's sales tax and use that portion for affordable housing projects. Well, we did a quick, some quick math and realized that's about $95,000 a year from just within the city of Lacey. That's obviously not a ton of money, but it's a start. But when you start looking at Olympia share and then Tumwater share and actually Thurston County as a whole, now you're talking about a decent-sized chunk of money. And so it's at least my hope is that we can work with our neighboring jurisdictions and come up with an interlocal agreement where we can combine that withheld portion of the state's sales tax and we can actually do some major projects. You could either bond against it, or you could actually go out and say, start purchasing, say, three-acre parcels of land. And if you've covered the carrying cost for the land, it makes it a lot more attractive for the private sector to then come in, build affordable housing. And so I'm really looking forward to engaging the rest of the jurisdictions in Thurston County on this issue. We have to pass that ordinance that will hold back that money here within the next six months, and then we're going to start spending that money after that. So we'll be right on top of this, and we'll definitely let you know how that progresses and what type of projects. Hopefully, we can work regionally with our regional partners on and start seeing some actually, some more units come online. So before we get to questions regarding the housing, affordable housing, the homelessness issue, is there anyone who has some questions about our transportation projects or any development questions? Oh, it looks like they're over here. And if you're watching me on Facebook Live, you can ask a question too, and it'll get to me. Okay, sure. So let's go with the transportation first. So this first question says, what are the near-term plans for the warehouse trucks congestion? Is there any handshake that they'll operate at night as much as possible?
So there is no restriction on the timing of the warehouse trucks. You know, there is the defined route, the defined truck route, which is Hogan Bay, Hox Prairie Road, Marvin Road. So all those sections are being beefed up or have been beefed up to support those truck traffics. All of the targets and warehouses paid additional monies, additional traffic mitigation fees to construct those roads. So I guess if the question is timing, no, there's not a restriction on time of day that those trucks can use those roads.
Are we working with, say, Target and the new warehouses coming along? Asking them if they could, you know, deliver at night, so on and so forth, Rick?
Well, we do have, they do run multiple shifts. And one of the things that they want to operate is maximum efficiency. And we found through their conversations in preparation for the Exit 111 improvements is that they actually are trying to route their trucks off peak demands because if their trucks are stuck trying to get to their facilities, they're losing money and time in terms of moving their products. So while we have had the general conversations and we don't have restrictions on timing, they're trying to operate in an efficient manner off-peak time so that they're not mixing with passenger vehicles as much as possible.
Great. Thank you. So then next question is sort of along that same line. What is the estimated increase in traffic due to the discussed industrial projects? And all, everything that's come up here, do we have an idea of how many more cars or trucks are going to be on the road after this is completed?
Yeah, I can't answer that right off the top of my head. If there's contact information there, we can check that out and get back to them.
Okay, then the follow-up is, will truck traffic access be restricted on residential roads?
Well, I'm going to touch upon the first question. While we don't have specific numbers and volumes that are right at hand, one of the things I've mentioned with the initial presentation was this whole area has been planned for this type of land use makeup since the early 90s. So part of that planning is not just land use, this use here and that use there, but we also look at the capacity of the utility systems, water and sewer, as well as capacity of the street infrastructure system. So as we move forward through the years, we're creating what we call transportation analysis zones that distribute, or do a modeling that distributes potential trips onto the system. We look at each project that comes in, does a traffic impact analysis, and we weigh that against the regional transportation plan as well as Lacey's transportation plan. And so we're tracking that growth and that, at those impacts. Now also with that, as we identify the future land use projections, we also are in our transportation plans identifying future projects that have to be done, which is why you're seeing improvements to Exit 111, Hox Prairie Road Roundabout, the Marvin Road Corridor, and 31st. And some of that is for public projects that the city does with using transportation mitigation fees by private development, and some of it is a development condition. For instance, the 31st corridor between Hogan Bay and Marvin Road, an example, was built by the U-Line project as a part of their project, but it was on our transportation plan as a needed segment to be created. So in terms of a specific number of projected trips, can't really tell you off the top of your hand, we have to get back to you, but we do look at that planning in advance. And the second question was, will there be a restriction of truck traffic on residential streets? There isn't a specific restriction, but we've been looking at designing the Hogan Bay Truck Route, which is a primary corridor for them to come up and into service industrial areas and exit out Marvin Road. Example of the bridge development, we're looking at design standards or site design limits that would direct trucks to go to the truck route and not come down Campus Glen Drive into Willamette to discourage truck trips into those areas. Now, there may be that one truck once in a while that will go off route, but most of the trucks that are contracted through the distribution facilities, they have prescribed routes and timing for showing up. So we do the best we can to discourage that travel on residential streets.
Thank you for that. Next question is, will Willamette be impacted with commercial truck traffic?
So Willamette is not part of the designed truck route. You know, like we said, the truck route is Hogan Bay to Hox Prairie Road to Marvin Road. So as Rick just noted, you know, there's, that might be that occasional stray, but that is not the design route for the truck traffic.
Great. So this next question is, is there any plan to expand bus service into the newer neighborhoods of Lacey such as in this area? As you know, the Interstate Transit had a big initiative proposal on last year's November ballot. It passed, but I'm going to actually turn this over. I'm going to put Councilmember Cox on the spot since she's Lacey's representative to Interstate Transit.
Turn it on at the system.
Oh, there you go.
Thank you. Well, as Andy said, the measure passed last summer. And according to schedule, we are supposed to see bus service out as far as Jubilee starting next year. Now, there's still some things to be worked out because particularly within Jubilee, the streets are pretty narrow and it's hard to get the larger buses in through there. So stay tuned for details. And I do serve on the Transit Authority, and so you're welcome to call me or email me anytime, and I'll be glad to keep you up to date on where we are.
And Rick, I think they've already agreed to start some service up into this area. Can you talk a little bit about that route?
Yes, they, we did work with staff at Interstate Transit to do a test service run that would basically take an existing route and run a one-way loop down east Martin Way, east of Marvin, up Meridian, and down Orion, circle around the Province Medical Center, and then back down to Marvin Road across High 5 to Quinalt. We end up not doing that service because of the construction activity on Exit 111 that we would, they wouldn't be able to save any time on that route. But that was something we were looking at doing. And but in parallel to that, as Councilmember Cox has mentioned, at a staff, we've been working with their staff on identifying transit routes, potential, working with them and giving them our land use information-related number of employee density locations, resident density locations, so they can design a system that best serves the area as best as possible. And of course, as we do development, and development occurs, we have them put in transit facilities like the bus stop pads, those type of things in preparation for the service.
Thank you. So this last one's for someone who's actually lives on Yelm and Ruttle. With the construction, we will have, will we have access to assist to Hox Prairie and Pacific? But will College be completely closed with the new construction out there?
So there's two construction projects going on on College Street, you know, this summer, and one will carry over into next year. There's a college in 22nd Roundabout, which will be this year and next year. And then there's a large overlay project that runs on College Street from 37th Avenue south to Yelm Highway and from the western city limits on Yelm Highway to Ruttle Road. So during that time, you know, there might be intermittent full closures, but for the majority of that time, there will be traffic, might be restricted to one lane each way. I did want to make one clarification on the question related to trucks on Willamette. So obviously, there's the industrial section of Willamette between Orion and Marvin Road. So obviously, there will be semi-trucks in that area. I just assumed that the question was related to Willamette north of Orion.
Great. Thank you. So this next question, we're now into on the development side. It says, what are the plans for expansion of the Hox Prairie area and mall or in business district, which is, I imagine, what they're talking about is what we call Gateway?
Yes, and the mayor mentioned earlier in the meeting about the Cabela's site and the idea at Town Center, and then we had environmental work done on that potential project envision, and then the recession hit. And then, of course, that original property lost the property through bankruptcy, and we have a new owner within Nisqually Tribe. So there really isn't any specific plans at this point for development. We still know it's a very key piece of property. The city envisions that developing in a mixed-use manner with a grid system through the site. You have the main street coming off of Marvin that terminates about a couple hundred feet in. You have the Gateway Boulevard that accesses Cabela's. And so the idea was to continue to build that grid within there with whatever development that occurs out there. So at this point, we're working with the property owners. We're talking to them about potential types of development that could go in there. And it's just a matter of either them or them finding a partner that can bring that market to bear.
Great, thank you. I think it's really important as the Exit 111 is finished with a new slip ramp that's being built right now, that slip ramp will not be open to the public. And so you won't be able to access Cabela's that way until the interior road system is completed. And so I know for me, that is a priority that they make those connections in there because there's nothing worse than seeing a brand-new project and easier access that can hopefully divert quite a bit of traffic off of Marvin Road. And it's unable to be used because the interior road connection isn't completed. So again, we're in ongoing conversations with Nisqually. We'll see what we can do on the city side to make sure those road connections happen as soon as possible. But again, we're sort of waiting on the private sector to develop that. And we're being as patient as possible, but we know... and we're being as patient as possible, but we know how important it is to this area that, that, that's finished. And that, as a side note, talking about Hawks Prairie area, I think the, it was in the Olympian, you might have heard that unfortunately, the Hawks Prairie Restaurant will, will be closing. That area is being developed into two fast food restaurants in there. So that is through, where are we at on, on that project?
Land use approval was just issued.
So the land use approval was just issued, so do we have a timetable on when that could happen?
We don't have a timetable.
But we don't have a timetable. So for, for me personally, it's, it's pretty heartbreaking. I mean, I've been going to Hawks Prairie Restaurant literally my entire life, and so it's one of those iconic restaurants where I've spent a lot of hours, and I'm sure a lot of people in this room has too, so it's gonna be really hard to see that go. But we understand that, you know, private land use owners make decisions to the best of, you know, to, for what's best for them, and I guess it's, at this time, it's, they decide that it's, they're gonna sell and have that be developed in something else. And so this, this last question is, how close is Habitat to completing the 37th Project? It looked like they were paused for a bit, and I know, I think you have some good news on this.
They are actively building the homes in the phase. It's a, again, it's one of those, it's a project that as they get volunteer label, they get financing, they go under the next phase. They have winter restrictions for construction because of the soil types out there, so that's probably why you saw a pause from last fall to the spring. But they are diligently phasing in that project as they have families displaced, the volunteer labor, and the, and the funds to buy the materials.
I think there's-
And I'm sure they're looking for volunteers too, if anybody is interested to participate in that project.
And I just received a notification that there are gonna be a new house opening up, and so we're gonna go do that here shortly. So that project is, is slowly being complete, and it's, it's been great to see that project progress. And to talk to the families that are receiving a house for the first time is, it's, it's really great. It's a great moment to be there when, you know, they receive their keys to their new house that they've actually helped build, or, you know, have put some sweat equity into it as well. And so it's been a great project, and it's been a great partnership with the City of Lacey. And the fact that we waived those fees really allowed that project to go forward, that's why you've seen them in the City of Lacey, and they've looked, say, what other projects could be, you know, they could possibly start here in Lacey as well. So we look forward to having an ongoing relationship with Habitat for Humanity. Is there, before, oh, a couple more questions?
[inaudible]
So the next one is there, is there any plans for a grocery store north of I-5?
I wanna say yes, but I wanna manage expectations a little bit too. We all see that there's a need for a market for grocery and other services north of I-5. That's a longstanding need, especially as the area has grown up in this. Trust me, we are communicating that to our landowners, our brokers, and when we speak with potential retailers, we're talking about this market. But the challenge is, is the national, the state of retail nationally. It's been a struggle, retailers to reposition themselves, especially with the advent of online activity, customer convenience, there are coming new phrases of frictionless retail, where you can just use your phone, put in an order, show up, and they bring it out to your curb. So there's a whole restructuring of that retail platform. One of the things, I'll use an example, Fred Meyer, they've been strong in the market about a year and a half, two years ago, they had some interest out here, but they had to put it on the shelf, and they're not doing any store expansions until 2020, 2021. So it's not that they're, we, we can't just go and plan a store, but we are communicating that there is a grid market out here, there's a strong need, and when the retail, national retail trends stabilize, we'll see some development occur out here, and those will include services both for grocery and other restaurants, those type of things, food and beverage will be coming at some point in the future. Just can't say when or who and how, but just be patient.
I know, I get questions all the time, it's like, why don't you bring X store to Lacey? It's like, boy, I wish I had the power to be able to do that, you know? For example, I, we just recently went to the, the opening of the wholesale foods, and it, it's an amazing building, you know, 800,000 square feet refrigerated and freeze, freezer there, and the whole building's basically a refrigerator. And of course, during my welcoming comments, I said, you know, when are we gonna have a retail store, especially up here in northeast Lacey? We definitely need a retail store up here, and so they know that we're interested, and we, we know that you're interested, and we'd love to-
And Trader Joe's put their industrial facility, their distribution facility out here, that was part of the conversation I had with their team is, what about a retail store? So we are making those efforts and trying to make sure that they are aware that we have this market.
Great. And so this, this last quick question is, is there any other major infrastructure that we haven't talked about tonight that's planned and coming in in the future, or personal or retail services are planned for this area that hasn't been covered?
Well, infrastructure spans a wide gap, and those seem to be two specifically different questions. But in terms of infrastructure, Hawks Prairie reservoir out here, it's a, it's our largest reservoir, it's a 4 million gallon reservoir, and it's deteriorating, and we need to get in and do structural repairs and painting. But before we do that, we have to construct a sister tank next to it so that we can take it offline and still provide the, the water flow, the fire flow, the pressures that everybody needs. So that'll be a significant construction project going on there at Marvin Road and 31st. In terms of transportation infrastructure, there, there are some gaps that need to be filled in. Like we said, that North Point, the Home Depot site that's being constructed right here at Hawks Prairie and Marvin Road, they're building their half of frontage improvements, you know, along their entire frontage, which actually goes up to our well site. The other side of the road isn't improved, so, you know, that would either occur as development occurs or as part of a, a grant when it becomes competitive for grant funds. So those, those, our infrastructure, transportation infrastructure is getting fairly completed this time, but those, those gaps are either grant dependent or development dependent.
So another quick question is, with all the single-family residents we've seen out here, and now a bunch of multifamily residents that have, that have come up, how many more units do you expect for us to have here in northeast Lacey? How many more units do you think? Do you have a shot?
Well, over the next, I might have a... Roughly in the pipeline, we have about 100 single-family units, and most of those will be out in this area, again, finishing out the, the Platts of the Jubilee neighborhood, as well as we have the Gateway Division 2, and there's another project on 32nd that has 20, 24 duplex development, that's Gateway North. So we'll see some single-family residential activity, and we'll see, continue of some multifamily. Citywide, we have about another 14, excuse me, another 600 that are permitted in, in the pipeline in terms of land use approval, so it's a matter of pulling building permits. But we also see the trends going towards multifamily. However, with the growth, the rapid growth of the City of Lacey over the last 20 or 30 years, we've run out of a lot of undeveloped land. So now we're gonna be starting looking at infill and small lot development, and I see the trend going towards more multifamily and smaller scale, the duplex, triplex type of units, in order to filter out that, that housing type and create more variety. We've been dominated by the single-family home construction for the last 20 years, and that's pretty much used up all the available land in the city limits. Now, there will still be some growth of residential growth in the unincorporated portion of our growth area in the county, south of I-5 down Marvin Road, down past the rack. But, you know, I don't have a number off the top of my head of what those number of units would look like. The other piece is, if Gateway or the Hawks Prairie Business District next to Cabela's develops with the retail and office, but it's also intended to have residential in there, so you can have another 500 units developed out of that as well.
Is, is there a place that anyone can go online to be updated on, on these future projects? Or specifically, the question is about Gateway, is there anything online about, if they wanna be updated about Gateway?
In terms of Gateway, I guess the best way is to send an email to my department, and we can kind of give you a status update, because sometimes it takes slow, it takes a slow, slow time to start development, or development plans to come in. There's no way to, you know, frequently check our website, you wouldn't get up-to-date information because really, nothing's happening. But pay attention to our website at the City of Lacey and the Community Development, or Community Economic Development Department webpage. We'll have active, a planning library that has documents, and we'll post information as it occurs. But in terms of up-to-date, you know, we don't have enough activity to give a current message at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Well, we're through that section. We have some more, a couple more questions?
I have a comment.
Can you, can you please come up to the microphone? Can you please keep your comment to about a minute and a half?
I'm gonna try. I'm Susan Tusa, and I live in Jubilee. And we've talked about all different kinds of development and population growth and growth of employees. There's something that has not been addressed, which is critically important, and it involves multiple jurisdictions in this area, I believe, and there's also a state oversight committee that has influence on this. I haven't heard anything about planning for adequate hospital services. Let me tell you about my experience on February 28th at Providence St. Peter. I consulted a physician by telephone, and he said, it sounds like you have appendicitis. Go to the emergency room immediately. And that's what my husband and I did. I had to wait eight hours to see a physician, and I had to wait 24 hours to have the appendectomy. I thought it was common knowledge that with appendicitis surgery, it should be done within two or three hours. My appendix burst before I had the surgery. The appendix was not, was causing a problem because unbeknownst to anyone, I had cancerous cells in the appendix, which now escaped. This is unconscionable. And then, for the first two nights that I was in the hospital, I was put in a double room, three nights. Two of those three nights, my roommate was seriously mentally ill. Mentally ill patients need to be in other rooms, separated from the general population. St. Providence St. Peter is stonewalling, will not respond to my inquiries. This is a crisis.
All right, absolutely. Thank you, thank you for this question. Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Lenny, who serves on our EMS, and he can fill you in on a request we just had, and he can fill you on some of this. Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein.
Ms. Mazzon? No.
There you go.
So, sorry to hear your story. Unfortunately, it's a story we're hearing quite a bit around here right now. We have a serious shortage of beds at both Providence and the only other hospital that we have here in the area, which is Capital Medical Center. Right now, on many occasions, we've had actually both hospitals at the same time be on divergence, meaning they're not accepting even ambulances coming in. So we've had to send ambulances as far as Seattle, believe it or not. So serious problems, obviously a concern. They, Providence wants to add more beds. They applied, it's, it's actually a very complicated and rigorous process to apply to get more beds, they're not allowed to just add them. It goes through the state of Washington. That process is supposed to take about six months. It's been more like 18. It was delayed, multiple problems, part of it being, I won't get into specifics, but there was an entity that actually asked, fought against it. They actually put in some paperwork to try to stop it from happening. That delayed the process. The good news is, just in the last couple of weeks, that, that authority has now been given. So Providence is going forward with adding additional beds. It's gonna take about a year for them to actually have the beds operational, but they are adding 50 beds. That will help. Nowhere near enough, doesn't even come close to starting to fixing the problem, but it's a step in the right direction. There's also a mental health facility that'll be opening in Lacey shortly, that will help with some of that problem too, as far as that mental health side of it. So there is progress, it's slow, very slow, but it is coming.
Yeah. This is a, a huge concern. As, as we know, we have a, a retirement community, especially up here in northeast Lacey and of cour, and Panorama. When my mother suffered a, a major stroke, she had, you know, continually had issues that she would have to go back to St. Pete's, and the amount of hours of my life I've spent there is crazy. And so the, the question that we have as a council is, what is St. Providence's plans for future expansion to, for this population? And especially when this issue came up with the request for beds, we wrote a letter saying, can you please add these more beds? It has been requested that Providence will come and meet with the city council and hopefully give us an outline of what their plan is for future expansion. Because the, the 50 beds is, doesn't even crack what, what we need. And so do they have enough property there? They've been talking about moving out here to northeast Lacey, maybe a, a mental health facility out here, and so that's sort of in the works, but we definitely need to stay on top of this, and I, unfortunately, there's a lot of other horror stories like that, and we know it's a big issue, and so we will hopefully follow up and figure out what their plan is.
Sounds like they need like 2,000 metal bed beds in this area, not just clinic-
No, yeah, we, we know, it would be great if Providence could relocate or have a facility out here, obviously. And so again, we're looking at, we're working on it. Can you please come to the mic? I'll get you next. Can you, can you give your, your name and keep your comments about a minute and a half?
Yeah, my name is Leslie McClure, and I actually read this to the Planning Commission recently, but I'm still not hearing awareness, and it was taken in to the record. So here's my concern. First of all, Kirkland was able to put moratoriums on fast food joints, or, or whatever condos, or whatever they wanted to do when I lived there. So I'm confused why Lacey has no control over who comes and goes. But that's a separate comment to this. What concerns me about this is I'm hearing a lot less about the need for live-in mental health and drug treatment facilities. And so if we're gonna push for hospitals, let's make sure they have a wing for drug treatment, and they have a wing for mental health. Because the homeless problem is a mental health and drug addiction problem. The Great Recession put a lot of families out on the street, that's mostly been resolved. And if you talk, okay, I've worked for 15 years with homeless, and I'm telling you what, you go ask them if they wanna live in a shelter, you're gonna get no more often than yes. So what you need is, you need people who need mental or addiction treatment to have a place to live and get it and be well. If you just keep building affordable housing and putting people in that affordable housing, then they're gonna be back out on the street exactly for the same reason they were there to begin with.
Thank, thank-
I'm not finished.
Okay.
I wanna submit this to the record because Lacey has millions of dollars coming in from these warehouses. So you can certainly afford more mental health and more drug treatment in-house, live in, until people are able to function properly and live in society and be well. You can afford to do it. So we can have more mental health facilities, we can have more drug treatment facilities, we don't have to have camps. Thurston County has destroyed Olympia. King County has destroyed Seattle. I'm sorry, you've got two counties that are just screwing up beautiful cities in a beautiful place. And so what we're talking about, and this is something, I'm not just the only one here, this is going on all over the place. What we're talking about here is following the example of other small cities that have done it right. Snohomish County has two, Marysville and Arlington. They embed social workers with the cops when they go to visit the camps, and the people there are given a choice, people there are given a choice of whether they get help or not. If they say no, then the, then the cops are told, or tell them, if you commit crimes, you're gonna go to jail.
Thank you, thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. I appreciate your concern and we know we need more mental health facilities. Like, it's been talked about, a new facility is, go ahead, is coming online. Matter of fact, should be opening up any time now. And we're hoping that is gonna have immediate impact in this area. I just had a meeting with Lacey Fire District 3 on Tuesday. They are going to be embedding a mental health physician into their program, a social service worker into their program. And we've also begun talking about having someone similar embedded into our police department as well. Those are just early conversations that we're having right now. But we're recognizing how much, how many more resources are needed when it comes to this. The fact that our firefighters and our police are now having to be social workers is something that, of course, when they probably signed up for, they didn't realize it was gonna be part of their job duties. But it's becoming more and more of what they're having to do. And so, we understand that. We've also have given CBD, CBDG money, we had to talk about the block grant money, to a facility right off of Martin Way for drug addiction. And so, I'm not sure where they're at on that. Councilmember Seven, do you have an update on that?
Yeah, so they finished construction just a few months ago. They're at 6,700 Martin Way East, Suite 117. It's, yeah. I just wanted to lightly, you know, remind everybody, a lot of people are gonna want to speak tonight. And to be respectful and fair to everybody concerned, if we don't follow the one and a half minutes, and Leslie has some great ideas, I've had several conversations with her, but we could be here till 6 o'clock in the morning and some people would not have the opportunity. So, just a little reminder there.
Thanks, sir. I know we're all passionate about this issue and that's why we're here, right, is to hear your input. And so, we'll just be as patient as possible, but please try to stick to the minute and a half. Let's take a couple more comments and then I'll get to questions.
Thank you. Terry Johnson, this is regarding the economic development, so a little bit of a curveball for you folks up here, this isn't my usual statement. First off, the economic development in this area is bringing in a lot of good tax dollars, I would hope. But they're good paying jobs for the construction workers building these buildings. I'm in the industry, these guys are all making 60, 80, 100, $120,000 a year working here. But when this boom is over here, they're gonna be gone and not in this community. Now, the businesses that are coming here, although Rick touched lightly on the amount of jobs that are coming, you know, several hundred jobs, that sounds pretty good. But in reality, that's what I call sugar-coated data. Because the majority of these jobs are part-time, low-paying jobs, which ultimately could lead to another problem with affordable housing. And so, my question is, what is the City of Lacey doing to draw in more better-paying jobs, industry such as medical, things like that? What kind of conversations are going on? Thank you.
That's a great question, and you kept it under a minute and a half, which is great. I'll turn this over to Rick Walk. You know, several years ago, we recognized how, we know how important economic development is to our community. In order to provide these services that we're talking about here, we need the revenue to do it. And so, Lacey has always been considered a business-friendly community and we've done it out of necessity. We don't have the Capital Auto Mall or the Westfield Mall that Olympia has, you know, their sales tax revenues, revenues over double ours in Lacey. And so, and even though our population has been growing steadily, our retail sales per 1,000, you know, people here has been basically flat. And so, even though people keep coming in, they're not necessarily spending more dollars here in Lacey. And that is a, partly a result of the changing landscape of retail. You know, if you, Lacey, we've had some, the bigger box stores that have closed down and some of the other bigger box stores have been struggling. And so, we recognize that we need to have a strategy going forward on what does retail look like going forward? And what is our economic development strategy going forward, as you point out? And so, I'll put Rick on the spot and tell you, he can tell you some of the things we're working on.
Yes, and that is a great observation, because a lot of our economies nationally as well as regionally and locally is based on construction, construction activity. At the end of the day, when that plateaus out, we're left with what the employment opportunities we have remaining. And just as an example, with warehouse jobs, there's a strata, there's a range of pay scales ranging from $18 an hour to up to 35, which is roughly $35,000 a year to $80,000 a year. And we've identified that as an issue and a gap in our economic development strategy as well as in our housing strategy. If you take a look at our housing strategy document, which the council, the Planning Commission just made a recommendation on to forward on to the city council, so the city council will be seeing it and taking official action on it here in the next month or so. But it really looks at what is our primary job classifications in our area and how do they relate to housing? And then what that does is say, not only do we have a housing issue and a homeless issue, but we also have an employment issue and how do we gain that employment? So we're working on strategies to, you can always try to recruit that big fish and those are very difficult and costly to go after and you may or may not land that big fish, that big employer. So we're looking at a bunch of different steps. We want to build on our existing small businesses. If they have opportunities to expand, expand market share, how do we help them? So we have, or implementing a business retention and expansion program where we'll go out and meet and greet with businesses, find out what their needs are, make sure that they're, one, that there are, if there's issues out there that we're not aware of and it causes them to have to go out of business, we want to try to prevent that as much as possible. But two, is there things they need, if they want to grow and expand, how do we leverage those services with our partners like the Thurston Economic Development Council with their scale-up programs, their economic guarding programs, those business training resources to help make sure that they're strong and prosperous? The other aspect is building off of some of our other assets. One is, for example, St. Martin's University, we have a great partnership with them, they have a great curriculum, especially in advanced engineering. And there's students, grad students come out of that that may have job ideas and those type of things. So how do we keep them local and then build into the community? So we are working with programs of partnering them with, again, the EDC and some of our other business support service providers. We're trying to connect them to local employers and then also use them as a recruitment tool for other companies, say, "Hey, if you come down here, you got these resources to give you tech support, research and development, those type of things." So, there's not one big identifiable strategy, but there's a lot of little things we're trying to do to grow that local economy and trying to gain that, make sure our talent stays here instead of exploiting our talent out elsewhere to find employment.
Before I turn this over to Deputy Mayor, you want to talk about the Lacey Makerspace real quick?
Yes, thank you. That's another piece of this puzzle as well. We're getting ready to launch the Lacey Makerspace. The Makerspace, if you're not aware of what the Makerspace is, is basically a workshop full of equipment ranging from your basic, you know, basic equipment, table saws and routers, to your CNC facilities, milling machines, laser engravers, plasma cutters, 3D printers. And the idea behind it is, we're trying to provide a resource, one, to help support our local business community, so if they need to do a prototype or need access to a piece of equipment that they don't, can't acquire, they can come in and use this facility. Also, if we have, we've heard from our business community that, you know, sometimes it's hard to find skilled workforce. And so this is an opportunity for students or other people to come in and get trained on equipment, get hands-on experience to go with their theoretical studies in order to have a skilled workforce going into employment for our business community. And then also, it's to try to create that opportunity for that local entrepreneur that may be doing something else, but hey, they have an idea, they don't know how to quite realize it. And they can develop that idea and create prototypes and see if they have a business plan. One of our partners in that is, again, the EDC, where they have the business support services and coaching. We also with that, St. Martin's University is a partner involved with this. And they have their resources that can kind of help that person, that entrepreneur that may be starting a new idea and building into a business, to give them some research and development and technical support as well. So we're trying to create this, this network or this ecosystem that can facilitate ingenuity, entrepreneurism and business development as well as skilled workforce to benefit the entire community.
And what hasn't been mentioned, but it kind of covers what Rick has already said, a few years ago, we realized we needed someone to help reach out to the business community and also work with the Economic Development Council. So we did hire, and probably has his title wrong, but George Smith is the economic director and he tries to engage and make sure that businesses know what we can provide and have what areas and venues are available for businesses.
They spoke clearly about what Lacey's doing regarding small and regional type businesses. Be reminded that to make Washington a business-friendly state as far as business tax structure and whatnot, be sure to elect the right state representatives and governors to do that.
Real quick, Rick, if I may. We all, as Thurston County residents, we all pay into to have the port. And for the first time, just a couple of years ago, they bought some buildings over here, about 30,000 square feet, I believe it is. And the importance about that is a smaller space, incubator space, that can really jumpstart, you know, new entrepreneurs turning businesses in, you know, starting new businesses and them growing to be medium-sized, large businesses. Things really important part to that equation.
You mentioned medical jobs too, and I didn't touch upon that. We are actively looking at the medical, that's a segment that we would like to grow. It was mentioned earlier that we have the South Sound Bivario Health Facility, a mental health hospital, getting ready to open up, it has 135 beds. It's in a 70,000 square foot building and it brings with it 200 jobs. And those are skilled jobs and higher-wage jobs. And with an operating, you know, again, with an operating budget of $20 million, so it's gonna create exponential jobs off of that because they're gonna be spending that operating budget locally for supplies and services and those type of things. So, we are looking at the medical segment as a tool and we also see that as a growing industry, regionally as well as nationally, because of just medical services becoming to the storefront model versus the old traditional medical campus model. So we're seeing a lot of expansion there.
I appreciate that. The comment about the port of Olympia finally investing in Lacey has been really good news and the, as has been pointed out, a lot of that space has been rented, but they have a building that's empty right now and we have a joint partnership with them to see what's the best use of that building. And as, what we're hoping is, it's gonna become an incubator space for either small manufacturing, maybe have a kitchen in there, an industrial kitchen. And so that will provide some other opportunities. The one thing I would like to let you know is, this council takes economic development, you know, very seriously. Five of these council members up here, including myself, they're current business owners or have been a business owner. And so we understand what, how difficult it is to be a business owner. And I have a lot of faith in our staff that we are providing the necessary customer service and platform for you to be successful in Lacey. Just a couple of years ago, we recognized, you know, as a startup small business, those first three years are really difficult. And so we implemented a small business being no tax credit if you're a new business in Lacey. And so, we're continuing to try to find innovative ways to help support our business community while, of course, taking care of our environment and our quality of life. So those are all things that are extremely important to this council. So, I'm gonna get onto a few of the questions before we maybe go back to a couple more comments. This first question's a good question, it says, "Whose responsibility is the safety of the homeless?" Chief.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So I'd say it's all of ours. So there's approximately one police officer for every thousand community members here in Lacey. So we act on your behalf to enforce the laws and protect you. And again, there's the perception of community safety. So we all, we're all responsible. We need your cooperation, we need your input, we need you to let us know what's going on. You're our eyes and ears, you're out there every day, you know what's right, what's wrong. We need to hear where the problems are so we can go out and protect you and everyone else in our community, which includes our homeless population.
Thank you, that's a good question. The next one is, what, so what are we doing as this crisis of homelessness is causing unsanitary conditions or they're spreading of toxic or communicable diseases? Is there any strategies we have along that?
So that's where the, the passing of the camping ordinance was so vital to helping our entire community. Again, aside from the criminal aspect, this question is a great question. It gives us the ability to go into an encampment where there may be unsanitary conditions and provide assistance to the folks living in that camp and also to our community members in getting help to get that cleaned up. So I think directly to the question is, what resource do we have available? We have all your city resources that are dedicated to keeping a safe and healthy community here. So again, your input and finding out where those locations are. If you see something that you believe is unsanitary or is a problem, please let us know and we'll get on it as soon as we can to rectify that problem and mitigate any future ones.
The next question is, what are we doing about, say, a homeless person who has, is with young children with them? Is the safety issue or neglect? Then the other, next question is, how do you prove someone is homeless? This person has a cousin who has family and friends who could live with, but he likes to camp on public property instead. So, how do we go about proving if they're truly homeless or not? And the last question is, with, with all the wildlife we have in this area, is the tree removal basically causing problems? And the comment was, there's a baby deer was caught in orange plastic just last week. So I know, those are three different questions, but maybe the first question, how do you, a homeless person with young children? And then next, how do you prove someone is homeless?
Great questions, again, Mayor. So as far as homeless families, that is a huge priority for us. And one where there, there are some additional resources for those who have kids or those are under 18 that are out in the homeless population for us to tap into that are, that are a little bit more available, much more available than anybody over 18 unfortunately. So there are, there are resources out there for us to address that immediately. And again, that's something as your police department that we take very seriously and that's not something we're just gonna check on and say, "Oh yeah, there's kids in a camp." That's something that we would not only go and investigate, but make sure there was some resources that were dedicated to helping that family.
Thank you. Majority of the work that I've done in the community has been around issues involving domestic violence, sexual violence and trafficking. And majority of the reason why you see women and children who are homeless in this county is due to domestic violence. And it's always a last resort. No one, the statistic is that a mother will stay in a violent situation two years longer than she should have to for the health of her children, to keep them housed. So when we see homeless families on the street, it's a real issue and it's the very last resort. So, a thought of neglect for those children, majority of the time, the mother is doing her very, very best to keep those children safe in a very difficult situation. The other difficult situation about housing survivors of domestic violence is that perpetrators oftentimes find them again. And they have to move again and again and again. So the cycle continues. And we only have one, maybe two, secure facilities within Thurston County for domestic violence survivors and their families. And the beds are always full. So this is a severe issue in this area and one we need to work to remedy quickly.
Thank you, thank you for those comments. This next question is a question I hear all the time and I'm not sure if I have a good answer for it, but the question is, is where did all this increase in homeless people, where did, where did they come from? And do we have such a thing as a vagrancy law? And do we have such a thing as a vagrancy law? Do you want to tackle that?
Well, I'll also comment briefly on the question on the last card that wasn't addressed, and that is, how do you prove someone's homeless? And, you know, that's going to be an emerging issue. I mean, for the most part, homelessness is self-evident, and there's no reason to question whether or not the person's actually homeless, if they're indicating they are. However it could be, and we've experienced instances where somebody's, you know, in a, in a motorhome that looks like it might cost a little bit more than somebody that's homeless could afford. And that's an issue, and we're going to have to figure out how to handle that. And the Boise court, which kind of put it on local jurisdictions to figure it out, they didn't give us any help in defining that. So that's going to be probably some emerging litigation that'll give us some tighter definitions. So that's just a, that's just a question. And as far as vagrancy, not a general law against that. Comments on that?
Again, you know, if you choose to be homeless, if you really choose to be homeless, you don't, you know, you don't, you just want to live on the street, there isn't a law against that. You can live on the street. However, you have to abide by the law of the city, county, state that you're living in. But you can choose to live on the street if that is your wish.
So the other part of this, and we've seen, especially here in Lacey, we've seen the number of camps sort of grow exponentially, just especially recently. And the question is, is why? What's going on? I don't have an exact answer for that, but I can sort of tell you anecdotally what's probably been going on. When the Ninth District Court ruling came down, the City of Olympia at the time had about, you know, 30 tents within the Olympia area that they knew of. One day, two tents came downtown on a piece of public property. Those two tents turned into 300 tents in two months. And it's really easy to criticize Olympia that they didn't do enough and they weren't quick enough to respond. But it did catch them quite off-guard, and it took them a while to sort of figure out what their next step was. I think at the time, the elected officials I spoke to were, everyone was sort of shell-shocked. What does this new court ruling mean? You know, what do we have, do we have to provide, you know, a shelter? What, what can we do? And it took a while for them to first set their first mitigation site. And then they set a tiny home village on Plum Street where the people who are in the mitigation site are then sort of taking the next step to the, to the tiny home village. And since they've sort of figured this out and they have cracked down on the amount of tents that were not on public property, where we're on public property but are no longer able to stay there, what they've realized is about, only about 20% of the people who they contacted who were living downtown in a tent or their makeshift tent, wherever, chose to go to the mitigation site where they had to follow rules. 80% chose not to. So where did those 80% people go? Right? Right? Well, a lot of them went under the bridge and to other places that was outside the City of Olympia's control to do something about it. So immediately, we saw this here in Lacey. And we've seen a growing number of tents by the Department of Ecology site, which again is state property, which we're not in control of. And we're seeing a lot more people in the public right-of-way, like off Exit 109. Again, state property, not our jurisdiction. And so we, we saw this happen immediately, and there was a concern from all the jurisdictions saying, what are we going to do next? And what is the state's responsibility since it's their property? And so we actually set up a meeting with the governor, and we met the last week of May and said, hey, what is the state's plan here? Because even with, on the Department of Ecology site, they asked if the City of Lacey could come in there. Well, that's, no, that's not our jurisdiction. But if we were to move them off that site or the other right-of-way sites, where would they go? They'd be pushed right into the City of Lacey. And so we requested that the state needs to also have a plan and also have a site where they can relocate people to so they can follow this Ninth District Court ruling. We asked, we had a couple asks. One was, can we please have a, a ruling on exactly what the Ninth District Court means to not only local jurisdictions in the county, but also to the state? Because there's a lot of different interpretations out there. We're confident that our city attorney has given us strong legal advice and that our camping ordinance has then followed that, and that's been our interpretation. But you, when every city has a different interpretation of this law, this, all we're doing is sort of pushing people around. We need to have a better strategy from the state all the way down to local jurisdictions on what we're going to do next. And so that was our request. It was, I think the governor took it very seriously. The mayors of, of course, Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, and the county commissioners were there. And so we were very serious about, hey, if you're going to move people off state property, you better have a place for them to go and don't just be pushing them into the City of Lacey or other jurisdictions. And so I think he got that loud and clear. Now, what they're going to do is another question. They're currently looking at possibly some state-owned property that they could, that they could use. I think they've said they've identified maybe 40 sites statewide. That could be a possibility. But again, big issue, and it's, we want to make sure that they're also following the law, same laws that we're having to follow. So let me ask, let me get to a couple more questions, then we'll go back to comments. So it says, "Regarding homelessness enforcement, Mayor Reyer spoke of public priority and camping. What about abandoned property or vacant property such as the ShopCo parking lot? Will the city enforce a no camping policy at these locations?"
That's a great question as well. And what we do, remember, we're talking about public property versus private property. So what we do is we go in and, and ShopCo is a great example, go in, find the property owner, and then have the property owner sign a letter that gives you the authority to act on their behalf if there's somebody trespassing in their parking lot. So in that case, that letter was signed. We were able to talk to some of the folks that were living on that property, primarily in motorhomes. And then several of them left, and then other ones came back. So it's an ongoing process. I imagine, Rick could probably talk about what may go in there next. And once we get some of that filled, that'll really alleviate that problem. But in property that is abandoned, we can contact the owners, get fencing, do what we can to fortify the area to prevent folks from living in that abandoned property or in that area.
Thank you. Let's see if I can, obviously, just like that, we're way over time. And so maybe let's go to a couple more comments, and then I'm going to, I'm going to pass these questions down through the council, and I'll let them each pick out maybe a good question or so, and then we'll do it that way. But sure, please come up and state your name, and please keep your comment about a minute and a half.
Hi, Sandra Williams. I wrote you a letter. You'll get it. So I'm going to make this as brief as I can. I think equally important on the Martin versus City of Boise, you should look at the dissenting Ninth Circuit Court judges who made a rather good statement. And I think that's where we're at right now. I'll leave that right there. But I think where we're at right now in this ordinance, what you're looking at, is talking about bringing in nonprofits. Well, some of them are okay, but then you really need to be careful. All I hear is money going out, money. All these grants are taxpayer money, federal, state, local, block, I don't care. It's taxpayer money. I pulled several articles, one from the City of Seattle in particular. The price of homelessness, the Seattle area spends more than a billion a year on this humanitarian crisis from 2017. The last page was a graphic entitled, "The Price of Nonprofit Aid: 746 Million." I looked at California, which has great examples that we ought to look to, what worked and what didn't work. And there's tiny crack house, tiny houses were built, turned into crack houses. They build shelters that turned in places to sell drugs and brothels. You know, how many billions are going to be spent? Where's the money really going? I looked at Sacramento, they gave two different nonprofit organizations their tax statements which exorbitant salaries. Same thing with District of Columbia, nonprofit auditor found 5.3 million overcharges. You know, this is a complicated issue. It's not going to be solved right away. But we've been let down by our judges and our politicians, and this needs to be resolved and just quit throwing money at a problem, get the whole West Coast together and get this solved. It's not going to get solved at this level.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. If you've already spoke, you, come up, sir. Let's see if we can get a couple more.
I have a couple of comments. One, can you clarify for me, the Ninth District Court ruling, is that federal, is that a federal court?
No, that's the Ninth District Court. So it's all of, it's a, it's a Ninth States Court of Appeals, but it only affects the Western states, right? The Ninth Circuit, which is what?
Idaho, Hawaii.
There you go.
Okay.
So it's not the, this is what's so difficult. You're right. This is a court ruling that affects basically Western United States.
I'm just, I'm just wondering why, and maybe somebody can explain it to me, why we're concerned about a Ninth District ruling in Washington State when we have, in this state, chosen to ignore many federal rulings, such as marijuana usage, such as education, and a sanctuary state, Inslee has now claimed we are. So why all of a sudden are we all concerned about following the Ninth District ruling? That is just a comment, it's rhetorical. I don't expect any of you to be able to answer it, but it's certainly food for thought for all of us. And something we should take to our state representatives as well. The other comment I have is from the City of Lacey Water Quality, 2019 Water Quality flyer that came out about groundwater protection. And in 1995, the City of Lacey began its wellhead protection program to ensure that activities and land uses, land uses, do not contaminate our groundwater supply. Well, I'm here to say feces, human feces and urine in camps that we don't want to disturb are affecting the groundwater, which in turn affects your drinking water. So thank you.
Thank you. I, we absolutely understand the environmental impact of, on this issue. And it's a concern, and we need to do something about it. The question about, can we just ignore the Ninth District Court ruling? You know, that's a question that we, you know, we put to our, our city attorney. It's like anything else, when a, when a law comes, comes down, does a, does a city have an obligation to follow the law? Well, yes, we do. You know, we would put, we'd be putting all the taxpayers in Lacey at risk if we chose to ignore the laws, even if we don't agree with the laws. And so that's just my personal opinion. I don't know if you wanted to add to that? Yeah. So, you know, there's a lot, there's a lot of laws out there that I would like to ignore if I could, but it's the law. And so in this circumstance, it's a, it's, this is a, it's been, it's caught a lot of us off-guard. And so, and as you know, local cities are not prepared to handle this crisis. We're just not. You know, we build roads, we plan for community. This is one of those issues that is not something, when I came in the office, that I thought was going to be on my mind every night before I go to sleep. And I, it is, and I know it's on the mind of almost every council member probably up here before they go to sleep, too. It's, it's a scary issue. Just over a month ago, we had a person in an RV pull up to City Hall and says, I'm parking here. You don't have an ordinance, says that I can, and so I'm going to stay here. There's nothing you can do about it. And that one trailer turned into upwards to nine different vehicles on City Hall property. And, you know, we need to do something about that. We passed this ordinance in response to it. And so unfortunately, there's, there's so much that happens in local government where we're, we're reacting to it. And I wish that wasn't the case. I wish I had the foresight to know that, what issues were coming down the pike and that we could plan for it and be prepared when that issue happens. Like, I wish I knew when, you know, the rainier is going to blow, and so we could be prepared for it. But I just don't know. And so, sure.
Can I ask a question? We're limited to a minute and a half. We limit, you guys.
Sure, sure. We're way, we're way over time, I agree. Sure.
I'm Sam Hershey. I got one for the chief. If I was driving along the street and I see a woman with a child, am I to report that to the police department?
This woman with a child, they think they're...
She's a panhandling. Asking for money. Okay. I saw one the other day.
Yes, no, and I want to make it very clear that when I gave you that resource before, the little, the little piece of paper you can pick up to report chronic related issues, that's not one of them. That's one of them that we need to go out and talk to those folks, find out exactly what's going on.
I witnessed that the other day.
Let's take another comment.
Hi, I have a quick question to the chief.
Yes, ma'am.
You made the comment that if you have a call and you approach somebody that's homeless, that you seek, you know, find out if they're homeless, if they need any help, do you also arrest them? It's my understanding that drug use in public is against the law unless it's changed. The selling of heroin and crack in public is against the law. Am I wrong?
You're absolutely correct. And if we investigate a campsite, find out someone's homeless and they're committing a crime, regardless of their socioeconomic status, we're going to enforce the law.
Are they arrested?
They can't, it depends on what it's for. They could be arrested, they could be cited, depends on the crime. If you're talking about selling drugs, drug use, yes, they'll be arrested.
Why do we see them all over the place?
There's a lot, there's a lot of drug use in, in, in Washington and Thurston County in general. So if we, if we see them using drugs, selling drugs, you call and say we saw someone doing one of those things that's illegal, we'll absolutely investigate it, and if we can find a fact that they were doing that, then we will make an arrest.
Okay. Thank you.
So, sir.
Yeah, I live in Jubilee. I drive through a whole raft of buildings with beautiful rooftops, millions of square feet. Why don't we use solar in those applications? They're there, they're there just waiting. That's it.
Rick?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And yes, there are, and there's been lots of talk too, of even green roofs and other applications. And we don't have any land use requirements that would require that type of building construction, but also too, for those size of buildings, while they make a great platform, the cost is also a challenge as well. So trying to balance what we can do with the cost, and it's a private, private entity. So, we did have some, as an example, we did have a small industrial building of earth friendly products located over here, you've probably seen their cleaning supplies on the grocery store shelves. They wanted to convert their rooftop to solar, and they ran into the challenge of structural integrity and the cost to be able to retrofit. So there's a cost factor and a construction factor, and then, and a private market factor as well. But there are things that we are working on with the Regional Climate Action Plan. We also have our CR2, which is our Climate Reduction and Mitigation Plan, that also is starting to promote the use of solar. And we're a smaller scale residential, new construction has to be built solar ready so that they can be installed if the homeowner in the future would like to install solar panels on their roof. So we're making provisions for that.
Another comment?
Hi, I wasn't going to comment, but my phone's been blowing up that people see me on the Facebook Live, so I feel obligated to. At my first meeting, I made a very strong statement about my opinion, or how I felt personally about the homeless issue. And I've been attending more of these meetings and getting more involved in things like PTA and whatnot, I'm really getting an eye opening experience to how complex this really is. I'm a PTA board member of a Title I school, I'm just learning these facts. Fifty-six percent of our children are on the school lunch program, school got out yesterday. Those children, I'm sorry, they're not going to have lunch all summer. Some of them don't have homes. And these are things that I did not see. These are not things that I understood when I first moved here. I just thought homelessness were drug addicts and vagrants, but they are children with parents who have nothing and nowhere to go. And that's all. So my perspective has changed completely. And I really hope that so many of you can see that too, because if you were at that first planning commission, you know what I said, how I don't feel safe, and I don't feel safe in my own community, but now I'm understanding that it's families in my community who have nothing. We have a house, we have safety and food everywhere, and they don't.
Well, thank you for your comment. You know, it's, it's really heartbreaking to look at the statistics through the North Thurston Public Schools on how many children are homeless within our, right here. There's, there's more homeless students in North Thurston Public Schools than any other school district in Thurston County. And that's why it's, was really important for this council to try and make some investments to change that. And the Family Resource Center, which you've seen us invest in, is really a model right off of our Lacey Veteran Services Hub. If it works for veterans, why can't it work for other populations, including our students? And so, that also includes specifically building housing for our, our students, which we're, we're doing right now. So, I understand there's two different sets of populations that we see. There's, there's the vulnerable, the people who are on the streets through no, you know, fault of their own except a bad break, who do not want to be there compared to another set population who maybe have a mental health problem or a drug addiction problem. We don't have enough resources to solve both. And it's been this council's priority to try to reach out to those who we can help and we can make a difference with the limited resources we have. And that's been our priority, and it'll be our priority going forward.
Thank you. I wanted to bring something out, an observation that I had from two different comments. One of them is, well, the government, the taxpayers are spending all this money on the, on the solution, too much money, it's not efficient. And then, the other comment, you know, are recognizing the need, identifying the need, but then some are looking to the government to do it. And their first comment was, it's not very efficient. So, I think it takes everybody working together. I think one thing that the government can do is help do what it's doing now, have these mediums, you're here, you're doing your part. What are the next steps? The next step is let's go organize and step up, create a fund or the community that says, "Here's City of Lacey, we recognize a need, we have 200 volunteers, we have donations, we have Rotary Clubs, we have a lot of organizations here in town that, where the citizens can step up and solve these problems, sometimes more efficiently."
Do you want to ask your question?
Okay. You mentioned that we take a couple of these questions and try to knock them out. Nobody here has all the answers, right? Okay. I picked this one, it's fairly long, but I'll go quickly. The 2019 point in time count of the homeless for Thurston County is not available yet. Preliminary numbers for the county are down, Lacey numbers are expected to be under 20. A question, what is Lacey doing to provide more realistic numbers and demographics on the Lacey homeless population? Yes, some efforts been taken on doing a census on the homeless. Census are very hard anyway, very expensive, and not always accurate. I think the solution that we've discussed tonight are, we need the citizens to help be the eyes on the street to identify the problem. We do have a new camping ordinance so that law enforcement has the authority to go in and talk with these folks. And then we're also, all of us discussing now, all the resources and the resources that are going to be needed to mitigate the issue on the end.
Can I have a piece to your response? The North Thurston School District does keep tabs on homeless students, and they do, they do a monthly census. And we had just around 900 students classified during the past school year as homeless. So that could mean anything from not living in a traditional house, like perhaps they're living in a car, or they're couch surfing, or they're living with a friend, or they're completely unsheltered and don't have a parent with them. So out of that 900, over 100 of those kids are totally unsupervised and unsheltered. So, I really feel like the school district is our best handle on the, getting a bigger picture of what the homeless community actually is here. So if you start to add siblings and parents to those numbers, you can see easily, it's probably in the low thousands at least.
Can I make a comment? The North Thurston School District does have a feeding program.
Yes, they do.
They do. The comment was, the North Thurston School District does have a summer food program for kids, and yes, they do. It's robust, yes. Do I answer my second question, or do we move on one at a time? Second one, or one at a time?
All right, I can answer this one real quick, I think. How will the residents of Lacey be protected from all the associated problems that are related to homeless camps? I think at the root of the problem, or the root of the solution, and I could be biased because I'm a Lacey guy, is it's an annexation issue, really. We, I think we govern a little bit better than most everybody in our region, and that's not being, being critical of them. If, if you saw the map there, there's a lot of green with the, of the annexed, of the incorporated part of Lacey and then the area that's not Lacey. I think the, if we, we come up with a lot better solutions and, and we effectively govern better, in my opinion, and that's the number one thing. I think if, if it was, if we could annex these areas and have control of them, we could, it would solve a lot of it.
So, just very briefly, I was on the North Thurston Education Foundation, and if you want to help kids, donate to them because they help kids in need. So, my question, it's, I'm going to kind of roll it to the two together, it says, "If the City of Lacey provides shelter, food, et cetera, what does the taxpayers receive in return? Example, are the beneficiaries obligated in any way to earn what they receive?" And then this one, "Has the city put together a draft plan to deal with the homeless?" So, because this is kind of a regional problem, actually it's a national problem, what, if you watched what Olympia was doing, they moved unmitigated sites into a mitigated site, then they moved those that could move into small houses into small houses, then they helped those to come up with a, either a place to, they can rent or live and help them become, get services, including being trained or a job. So, that is probably the best progression, is try to get them stabilized, move someplace where they're out, where they're not messing up the environment. I'm an environmentalist, so that really worries me, but, but also it's unsafe for them. What people don't realize is many homeless are victims of other homeless people, so that's a concern. So if it can be moved to some more stable site, then move that, move those that can move into someplace where it's more sheltered, and then be able to find services so that they can actually live in a place because they have been stabilized either with medical support or whatever, then they can actually work at jobs. And that, to me, is a benefit to you, because the more money we pour out to try to deal with this kind of chaotic situation is an impact to you. But the more we move people into being into society, that takes it off of you. And so, that is our logic behind this, and I hope, I hope it works, you know, this is new, but I think this is at least a plan, and that's kind of how we're looking at it.
This question asks, says, "It seems as if the council is not in favor of the proposed emergency housing changes. Who is the driving force behind this?" And I'm interpreting this question as to be about the emergency stabilization site that we're working, is the question, questioner still here, the person who asked it?
Yes, and you're right.
The mitigation site?
It's about that? Okay. Well, we haven't really taken a vote as a council, but I think in, we have had a little bit of conversation about it, and while I think we all come at it from a little bit different perspectives, that I think most of us agree that this is actually a good idea. I think some people are extremely interested in wanting to see it not just be a place for people to flop, that there is a plan, that, you know, you can make a progression perhaps from a tent to a tiny house to supportive housing with services that would help you become more independent. One, one thing though, that we just have to face is our economy, while it may be booming for some, it's just, the housing market is just really awful right now, and people can't even afford a one bedroom apartment. The rents have gone up, like what, Rick killed me here, is it over...
Nine hundred?
Rents, rental rates have gone up?
Twelve to fourteen hundred dollars.
Twelve to fourteen hundred dollars, but they've risen like 50% or more just in the last four years.
They just reassessed our houses, and mine went up 50,000 this year.
Right. Yeah.
And some people have three jobs in order to stay in somewhere.
She said, "Some people have three jobs in order to stay in where they are." So, it's, it's a really, the housing market really has a lot to do with the number of homeless that we are seeing here. And I, I heard a recent statistic that at least 80% of the people that are in homeless encampments that Olympia's been working with are from Thurston County.
Can I add something?
Yeah.
I just want to add something to, to the answer, at least from my perspective on that question regarding the mitigation site. I think the question was, is the, why is it that the council is not supportive of it? Is that what the question was? Want to make sure I'm answering the right question?
It was really, it wasn't really the mitigation site specifically, it was more like the city is trying to introduce more emergency housing.
Okay. So, well, the mitigation site is, would be part of that. So let me, I just want to add a little bit to mitigation site. I've not made up my mind personally, so I mean, we've discussed it at council. This is in extremely early stages, the mitigation site that we're referring to, the county site. I have dozens of questions before I could possibly be supportive of it. Some having to do with the location, although I don't think the location's necessarily a bad idea, but I have a lot of questions as far as what we're trying to accomplish, what services would be able to be provided. To take people who are homeless, and there's multiple reasons, right? We all know there's lots of different reasons for homelessness, but we have, it's clear that a great, a pretty high percentage are on drugs and/or have mental health issues, or both. To put those people into a mitigation site where they're not able to get the services they need, where we can't help them to become, to get off of drugs, would be something I couldn't support. So the only way I would be supportive of any mitigation site is if we're going to have the services to help get people clean and sober, so that they can become, you know, productive members of society, so they can get a job, so they can then become part of the, the population that's actually paying taxes and helping things progress.
Do you want to stop your question?
Sure. My question that I have here is pretty well related to that, so it's, it has stopped being given to not, to not only not allowing camping on public property, but being assertive in arresting violators. So, up until just this last week, when we passed the camping ordinance, we really had no ordinance to enforce. So the problem was, our police officers could go out there, but people didn't want to move, they could just tell them no. And that's exactly what happened at City Hall with people that were camping there. So, the camping ordinance now gives our police officers something to go out and enforce. My personal feelings on it, and this may differ, you know, among council members, is I believe that it's, it's our job as electeds and our police forces' job to enforce the law. So yeah, I support assertive, you know, following the law. Remember that Boise decision though, does put some limitations on what we can do unless we have somewhere to send people. Keep in mind, because I read a few, a few of these questions, so this kind of handles some of them, but there's some, some misconception, I think, about what that means. You know, some people have the idea that that means we have to have a facility with beds. Not necessarily. If someone's camping and we're able to move them to a different campsite that maybe is a more appropriate place to have camping, where maybe we have bathroom facilities, that kind of thing, that might suffice. So it's not necessary that we have indoor sheltered beds for all of these people. Same thing with the RVs, which was another question that I looked at there. If someone's living in their RV and they're parked at City Hall as an example, well, I don't think that's an appropriate place. I don't think we want RVs parked at City Hall for people to live in. But if we can find another location for them to move, then I think we can enforce them moving, and if they don't move, then yes, I think we can take law enforcement action. And of course, if they're committing any other crimes, if there's drug use, if there's those kinds of things, by all means, we should be assertively, you know, following the law. That's our job.
Thank you. So, the question I have is, have we identified the population of homeless? What percent are youth aging out of state care, and what percentage are other demographics? So, yes, there has been some attempt through the point in time census that happened. So, you can all pull this up, if you just Google "point in time Thurston County" and pull up Lacey, you will find it. And I have, I have it here in front of me. So, the, the different demographics that they identified are the chronically homeless, male and female, non-conforming, mental health issues, alcohol substance, veterans, domestic violence, unaccompanied minors, kids under 18 with a parental figure, chronic health issues and physical disability. Then it further breaks it down into age for those of, those of our population who are aging and not able to age in place, and no longer able to afford the home that they've lived in for a very long time, and then end up on the street, or couch, couch surfing, if you will. So all this information is available online, like I said, with the point in time. I think it's very important that we recognize, since we're talking about mitigation sites and shelter, that there's a term, I'm sure you've all heard it, called low barrier, right? Have you heard of low barrier shelters? So, when I first moved here and they wanted to put a low barrier shelter, this is when I lived in downtown Olympia, I was like, "Oh no, that sounds bad, because there's sex offenders, and we don't know who these people are," and all these types of things, and this is a very bad thing. I agreed at that time because it was near schools, so I still agree with that. However, what low, what I found through my research and understanding this more is what low barrier means is simply meeting people where they're at. So, when I... So, when I say that, these are people just like you and I, we're all part of the same community, some of us have addresses, some of us don't, right? But there are couples, and there are people with families, and there are single people. And, and these people, if we try to separate them, will not go into, into safe shelter, right? If someone tried to say, "You can have this, but you have to leave your husband and your children, they have to go here, you have to go there," I, you couldn't tear me away. You could not. So that is what I found what low barrier means. And, and it still sounds scary sometimes, right? Because these people don't necessarily have to be, hold identification, right? Which is something that we should insist happens at every shelter, is like, okay, you don't have identification, we want to know who you are, because we want to make sure everyone's safe here. So we're going to help you get identification, we're going to find out what we need to in order to maintain safety. So there are things about low barrier that need to be helped along to maintain security and safety, but we also, I think, need to realize that people are still people, no matter their socioeconomic status, and we can't separate people, we can't separate families, and, and so these are the demographics, and we need to find a solution that fits all those demographics and keeps humanity and dignity in mind. Okay? Yes.
Just very briefly, I worked at Bread and Roses for a number of years cooking things. And one of the things the person that was in charge told me, which hit me sort of across the face, because I didn't think about it, they said, "Well, these people are homeless, but they can't work, they have no address, and you have to have an address to fill out applications and work." Well, that just did not dawn on me. So, so there is, and I realize there are those that are on drugs, that are mentally ill, part of the things of hopelessness, though, tends to get you down a rabbit hole and make it things worse, so you end up taking drugs. But, but that's the thing, if we can move them to places where they can have at least an address and stabilized, there's a possibility of finding work. So, that's my two bits.
Has everyone asked a question? Okay. Well, let's take a couple more comments.
Thank you very much for, for the opportunity. If I may raise it a little bit. My name is Eugene Kaya. I was raised in Ukraine, and I have some experience moving in, through different countries. I've been to more than different European countries and can share some experience there. So I was, I was to such, I've been to such countries as Germany, Austria, the Netherlands, Czech Republic, Poland, the Great Britain, and I was doing business there. And I can tell you that I haven't seen such a bad situation with homelessness anywhere in my life, as in the United States, unfortunately. And the situation in the last, let's say, two, three years has aggravated and is declining, unfortunately, in my understanding, in my, in my assessment. So, you guys are our leaders, you are our lawmakers, local lawmakers, right? So, we rely on you, we expect you to turn the situation around and be able to help the society, the community, instead of, you know, just watching that it's going down the hill. So, it's just something that I've been observing, and that's kind of like my, you know, my, I'm really compassionate about homeless people, and unfortunately, the current system, the current system encourages homelessness, instead of discouraging it. So maybe you can find a way how to change it, turn it around. And a quick question, quick question, if you allow me, just, just a few seconds, I believe, to the police chief. You, you said before that due to the recent ordinances for the camping rules, if you find a person camping in the public space, I believe like overnight, right, so you're going to enforce them, if it's a, I mean, the person with the permanent place to live, right, like a homeowner, and they're camp. For example, if I'm camping in the public place, you will approach me and you will probably arrest me, or penalize me for parking in the, or camping in the, in the, in the public space. But if I'm a homeless person, you said the conversation changes in that case. Does it mean that homeless people are allowed to park in the, in the public spaces because there is no shelter provided by the city of Lacey? And if it's the case, don't you think it's discrimination against, against regular homeowners who can't park like that? Just a quick.
That's a great question. So, as your chief of police, I'll answer that differently than I'd answer it as your neighbor, okay? But I'll tell you that the, we're limited by what we can do as law, your law enforcement officers, by the law. And the Ninth Circuit Court came down with a decision that limits our ability to enforce the camping ordinance for homeless people. So if we were to approach you, and you were pitching a tent in City Hall, and you said, "Hey, I just want to come sleep out under the stars tonight, I, yeah, I live over 123 Main Street, I really doubt that you would get cited and/or arrested," we would ask you to leave and tell you that it's illegal, and if you told us you weren't going to, then we would have an issue, we would have to take enforcement action.
I just want to add something to that. So, I appreciate your comment, because I agree that it is discriminatory, but unfortunately, the Ninth Circuit Court has made a ruling that we have no choice, and our police officers have no choice but to enforce, which is treating homeless different than other people. But I completely agree with you, it's unfair. You're the homeowners, you're the taxpayers, you're the people that are funding the city and making, giving us a police force that can go out and enforce the law. The law should be enforced equally. Unfortunately, right now, the Ninth Circuit Court's ruling, in my opinion, doesn't allow that. Now, probably legally, I'm sure there's an argument against what I'm saying, but I completely agree with what you said.
But if there's a place for them to go, if there is a place for them to go, then they'll need to go.
Yes and no. There are places right now that have beds. Yes and no. Is there a place for everybody out there? Probably not. So, is there a place for a van under discussion?
I can answer a little bit of that after you get a question.
Hi, thank you. My name is Bert Cyver, I'm the director of Help Us Move In, a local charity. I've been doing this for 18 years in Olympia. Last year, we gave Family Support Center $100,000 to help homeless families. We helped 606 kids of 300 families. We work with landlords, and your discussions here has been great to date, till we got off to the Ninth Circuit Court and all that stuff. Donations to Family Support Center, which we match. We provide a home, the opportunity for a family to get a home, and we've averaged for the last 18 years $168 a kid to get a home. And so, what we're working on now with Family Support Center is we're going to be challenging this community with $60,000 a year to be matched for the next 30 years. That's $1.8 million for the people in Thurston County to be matched, which will result in $3.6 million to help homeless families. That's $160 a family, excuse me, a child per year. You made a good statement earlier, there's kind of two populations. Asked the question is, "What is the average age of a homeless person in America?" And councilwoman said 18, 20, 21, 22. The normal answer is 25, 40, 45? No, it's nine. Nine years old. There's 1,617 homeless children in Thurston County, 900 in the North Thurston School District, and how about the ones that haven't qualified, aren't old enough to go to school yet? The point-in-time census is, means nothing, because you have to give your social security number, and I'm out on the street, and I'm homeless, and you want my social security number? Get lost. So it's meaningless. But, the census said the school district signed 1,617. A quick story, one family we helped four years ago, mom had no hope. Today, she has a bachelor's degree, a master's degree, four teaching certificates, and she works in Shelton. She was homeless, we gave her family $450, she got an apartment and started working. And if you like the ballet, her daughter is a star ballerina at the Northwest Ballet, who has a full scholarship for the Joffrey Ballet, or the Seattle School of Ballet. $450 bucks. Make donations to Family Support Center, and we're matching them. Thank you.
Thank you. We are way over time. Do you have a, just a quick last comment question?
Does that work?
Sure.
All right. My name, oh, thank you. My name's Mary Ellen Ward. I don't, live in Lacey, I live nearby. I have been homeless in the past. I now have a PhD, and that kid I was homeless with has two degrees from UW. I also got a certificate in forensics. I want to say that I've observed a couple Lacey police officers lately using good wisdom and discretion and compassion with homeless people. And I think we need to keep wrapping around the support to the police officers. With this inquiry is important, because there's as many different homeless problems as there are homeless people. And you even have offenders that haven't been mentioned that may not be offending, that may be a dad out there trying to pay child support. But I've been asked to also bring up that there's been somebody homeless for a year and a half in an RV that's only been asked to move and has never been offered any solutions whatsoever. So this change, with this ordinance allowing them to talk, it's got to be supported with support for the officers and the resources that they need, and they've got to have something. When I was a waitress, I had to give people a coaster, or they wouldn't wait for their drink. They got to have something, they got to have some cards to offer people what the services are, and when the officer comes back, they've got to have somebody to go to, to say, "I met somebody that doesn't have what they need, and this is, this is what I don't have." And somebody's going to have to go find a way to provide that, because the officers have to have that support. But the people have to be offered solutions. There's a lot of disabled people in RVs that could pay for a spot to put that RV if it was provided.
Thank you, thank you for the comments. Well, we've had a, obviously a lively discussion here tonight, and I really want to appreciate, I appreciate everyone for coming out and giving your opinion, and we're going to take this all into account as we move forward. And I, I think one of the things that we've learned through this process is we do have a responsibility, if someone's homeless, and if they're even on public property, or in some cases on private property, to provide a safe place for, for them to go. I think it's also important that that place is not permanent, that they receive services, that they can move on, and the example of the $450 can help maybe change a life. You have to be able to identify what those needs are, and then, and spend that money, those limited resources wisely. And I think we're finally sort of headed on that right path. We've identified one site that, that can hopefully provide services, and there will be, need, be others. And I think slowly, but surely, we can move people who are in unsafe conditions, who are maybe damaging public property, or damaging other property, put them in a better location that's safer for the public, it's safer for them, and hopefully they can receive help, and they can be, become a, a, a member of society that only saw a blimp in their life instead of a lifestyle, which is what we're trying to, you know, prevent. And so, I do think we all have a responsibility in this. It's the, the elected officials up here, we all mean well, and we're all, and, but it's been pointed out, we can't do it alone. We need everyone here to sort of keep your eyes open and, and do what you can to make a difference in this community that, that we love so much. And if, if we all work on this issue together, with, with some compassion in our hearts, I know we can get there. So, thank you for coming tonight, I appreciate all your comments, and we'll be doing other councils on the roads throughout the rest of Lacey, and so if we don't see you there, we'll hopefully see you at City Hall, or of course, feel free to contact any of us anytime if you have a question or concern. Thank you, and good night.